Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bomke.
Here.
Mr. Cavalier.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
Here.
Mrs. Mauer.
Here.
Ms. Shelton.
Here.
Mr. Snellins.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Just to inform the public, due to a family emergency, ill, medical emergency, Mr. Cohen will join us today by phone, which is legal under state statute, and Madam Attorney, you can quote it if you'd like, but it's legal. At this time, we have a proclamation that we want to present.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt. The board actually needs to take a motion and a vote to allow Mr. Tom Cohen to participate electronically.
Okay, so move. I have a motion. I have a second and discussion. All in favor, cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Now, we're going to do a proclamation honoring Black History Month, and one of the things that's always difficult for us is who do we present the proclamation to when we're proclaiming something that covers so many people? So, it was suggested to the board, and I think it was an excellent idea, that we presented to a lady who had worked with this county for many, many years and broke so many barriers during those years. In 1982, Stafford County hired its first African American as Assistant County Attorney. In 1984, she became the first African American County Attorney, not only in Stafford, but the first full-time county, black county attorney in Virginia. Her husband, John W. Scott, Jr., became the first African American to sit in the General District Court in Stafford County and the first African American judge on the 15th Judicial Circuit Court. As she and her family contributed so much to our county and to Black History in Stafford County, we have chosen Ms. Alda White to accept our proclamation honoring Black History Month. I would also like to ask Mr. Cavalier, since he and I are the two board members remaining, it tells you how we are, that serve with Ms. White, to join at the podium. But before we do that, I also want to recognize my predecessor on this board, Ms. Linda Musselman, who served as Hartwood District Supervisor from 1992 to 2001. I'm still trying to fill her shoes, but it's impossible to do. So, Ms. White, if you'll come up, Mr. Cavalier, if you'll join.
Well, it's nice seeing you again, ma'am. I tell you what, we miss you here. We really do.
Really?
Yes. You don't miss us, I'm sure. But I'll read the proclamation as the chairman dictated. A proclamation honoring and recognizing Black History Month in Stafford County, whereas African Americans have made significant contributions in all areas of Stafford's economic, social, cultural, and political life, and whereas each year, Americans observe Black History Month by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Africa, and whereas Stafford is proud that persons of African American descent chose to live in our county and have added to and enhanced our community life, and whereas persons of African American descent have impacted business, military service, education, health care, science and technology, and other areas that propel Stafford forward in jobs and businesses and education, and whereas our African American community contributes to the great diversity and unity of Stafford County with a rich history of different cultures and ethnic impact, and whereas, as Stafford continues to build a community that welcomes all, we thank our African American community for its many contributions to both Stafford County and our country. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this 19th day of February 2019 that it be, and hereby does, honor and recognize Black History Month 2019. Would you like to say some words?
No, I'm recovering. Jack called me a lawyer. I'm a recovering lawyer. Thank you. Thank you. I'm glad to see Stafford recognize Black History Month. This is something that has, is very dear to me, and I'm glad to see you do it formally. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here, even though everything's a little fancier than it used to be. Yeah, progress, progress, progress. Thank you. I had a wonderful period of time here in Stafford, and it was quite a learning experience for all of us. Stafford has grown. When I came here, the black population in Stafford was very, very small, and you cannot say that today. So, I certainly am glad to see that we've become an open and loving and giving community. Thanks.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Xavier Richardson with the Hospital Foundation. We're going to talk about the 5K race coming up across the street at Stafford Hospital.
Indeed. It's a great honor to be here today to share with you some exciting news about how we are now enhancing something that has been an annual event, the Stafford Hospital 5K Race, which is really not anything foreign to this body because we often see many of you out there participating, and so we're very grateful for that. This year's event will be held on Saturday, April 6th, at the hospital campus, and we renamed it now the Spring Fever 5K. And our race is, once again, a part of the Caldwell Banker Elite Grand Prix, a series of 12 races that are held throughout our community and our region. We welcome devoted runners, weekend joggers, walkers, talkers, and families to participate. This year, we also are going to become a part of the Stafford Race Series, which you're probably familiar with. There's already a Fall Halloween 5K and Monster Mile Run for the Jeff Ross Center and a Frosty 5K and Raindeer Run, so I think it was about time we have a Spring Fever 5K, so we're going to be a part of that as well. Also, new to the race this year is going to be the Battle of the Districts. As we were walking and talking, Meg and I were discussing, wouldn't it be great if we had all of the supervisors come out and have a little competition and get them to see who can generate the most participants for this event through their respective districts? So, now, this year, we're going to have the Friendly Battle of the Districts. So, we hope to see even more persons from your respective areas participating. Once again, the proceeds from the race will benefit your Stafford Hospital Foundation and help support our mission to improve the health of the people in the communities we serve. We are a nonprofit hospital and healthcare systems. That's why I say "your" hospital, it's not "our" hospital, but yours as well. Some of the monies will be used, and has been used in the past, for the purchase of educational tools for Stafford Hospital clinicians, equipment for radiation oncology, free yogurt, therapy for cancer patients and survivors, and funds to purchase the pulse point, which we did in conjunction with Fire and Rescue and the Gwynnis Giff Foundation. So, as we celebrate our 10 years of service, as well as the founding of this event, we are grateful for the continued generosity and support of this community, and in particular, the continued support of this body here. So, please visit springfever5k.mwac.com for more information, and maybe they'll bring the spring weather on a little sooner, and we hope to see you all there. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Richardson? Is that all? Mr. Dudenheffer?
No.
Oh, you're waving.
I guess the competition is on, right?
It's on, indeed.
Now, guys, I'm going to tell you something. It might not look like it, but I did, I have walked that race.
You have walked it many times.
I have. And I missed last, I missed last year, but I'm not going to miss this year. And I'm going to ask everybody in Hartwood right now.
Okay.
Sign up for this thing. Ms. Musselman, you're going to be first. You don't have to walk, you just have to sign the form, but Hartwood, and pay the money. Hartwood is going to win this thing.
Okay. Congratulations in advance.
I'm throwing out to challenge my fellow board members right now. It's Hartwood, number one, on April 6th. Sound like a deal?
Indeed. I congratulate each and every one of you for winning on April 6th. Thank you. I can be a politician, too. Thanks.
No doubt in my mind. Thank you, sir. I see no additions or deletions to the agenda. Is that correct? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Snellings?
Yes, I'm sorry.
We have closed session on this agenda, and it doesn't look like we have a closed session item. Do we want to remove closed meeting from the agenda?
That's correct. We don't have any items.
We don't have any items?
Okay.
Okay. So, I have a motion to approve the agenda, less closed session.
Ms. Bomke has something.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure, because I didn't see anything in an add-on folder, that we did make the clerical change to the BZA appointee.
Yes, it's on the agenda.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, with, I will make a motion for the amended agenda, removing the closed meeting.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Remember that comedian had that little thing in the box? You know, you'd open it up and say, "What's up?" You're all right, Tom. You're doing good. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cast your votes. Tally votes. May want to re-tally there.
And does Mr. Cohen just do a voice vote?
Does Mr. Cohen vote?
Mr. Cohen, was he a yes?
Motion carries seven to zero. Presentations by the public. I do have two speaker cards. First one is Dana Brown. I think everybody knows the rules. You've got three minutes. When you come up, the green light will go on, the yellow light at one minute, and then the red says, "Please cut it off," and then, "Please state your name and address for the record."
Got it. Okay. I'm Dana Brown. I live at 41 St. Williams Way in the Rock Hill District. I'm here today to talk about Ferry Farm. I sat in your Fab meeting today. I have to tell you, sometimes it's really hard for me to sit in there and not be able to say something. So, a couple of things that I just wanted to mention. I've attended many, many school board meetings and work sessions on Ferry Farm, more than I can even remember. And one of the things that might have been left out today was about the air quality. I do recall the school board saying that the children cannot spend all day down in the basement. Because the air quality is so bad, they have to rotate them out after a certain number of minutes. That's why they cannot hold classes down there. I think they get pulled out for specials and things like that. Maybe I missed it, but I don't remember that being mentioned today. And in my mind, air quality is way more important than renovating a high school track. And the track that they want to renovate is in my district, and I'm okay with passing that over in favor of Ferry Farm. I did disagree a little bit with one of the supervisors on the cost of the rebuild. The numbers for the rebuild are a year and a half old, so they're more than likely higher now, and based on our past experience, we all know how rebuilds go over budget. I would advocate you do a renovation and do it right away. It's also my understanding that the school board is not asking you for additional money. They just want to use the monies that they have from within, and trust me, I think they have plenty of money from within. They can find this. And I'll come back to you more in budget season to talk to you about that. But I hope this isn't turning into a political issue. I don't want people to politicize the rebuild over renovation. Let the school board do the renovation. Let them use their own money. That's pretty much it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. The second and last speaker card I have is Mr. Kevin Wydell.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Wydell. I live at 123 Lakeshore Drive, Fredericksburg, Virginia. I'm here to support item 18 on the agenda, which is the Lake Carroll Service District. Lake Carroll, Lake Carroll Service District was created by this board approximately a year and a couple of months ago to fund the renovation of the Kennedy Dam. At that time, the engineering studies and the best guess of the engineers were brought forward, and the board saw fit to fund the Lake Carroll Service District for that amount. Since then, additional studies have been done, and negotiations with the state, who approves the regulations, have increased the costs. One case, they required two and a half times the recommended erosion control material, which went from 17,500 feet to 15,000 square feet of material, significantly increasing the cost. What we would like the board to do is now fund the Lake Carroll Service District to take into effect these costs. There's only 18 members of the Lake Carroll Service District. 19 lots, 18 members. We're fully shouldering the burden ourselves for the cost for the renovation with the help of the county to front the money. What we'd like to do is, since it's going to be significantly more money, push that out to about 30 years, keep the same rate. That would then keep the payments within a few percent of what it is now for the people there. Approximately half of the people on the Lake Carroll are retired or will be within a few years, so they're on fixed incomes. And we're talking an average of $1,000 a year for a tax to pay this back. We were a little surprised by the cost going up. A lot of it is the state. There's not a lot of negotiating with them because they got the bottom line sign off. So, we're just asking for your help to keep us moving forward with this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wydell. That's all the speaker cards I have. Open it up to the room. Is there anyone on my right that'd like to address the board on any issue? Any subject at all? Seeing none, anyone on my left? Yes, ma'am. Come on down.
Hi, I'm Susan Randall, and I'm from the George Washington District. And I just wanted to speak a little bit about Ferry Farm as well. It's something I'm pretty fluent in, considering I had kids there from 2003 to 2015. I was also on the PTA Board for seven years, five years as president, and of course, I've left there since 2015, so. But I've spent hours and hours listening. I was on the CIP when we came up with the renovation plan for the elementary schools and where the kids would go. I do want to say that we still have, I noticed that when we were looking at this renovation project and how it was 10.8 million, and we thought that could do the entire issues that we have in the school, and we're finding that severely short-sighted. To do all of this work on renovation and not gain seats is somewhat, to me, a little, when we're talking about a total county redistricting at this point, and we need to gain seats. I'm not looking, I would like to see Ferry Farm not be a pretty project, but rather something that helps the county go forward with adding seats. I don't know that this renovation, in the phases that it's set up in, is actually going to provide the, it's going to be 31 million, as Mr. Cavalier said, and we're not gaining any seats, and so we still have the same problems. The health, the health and welfare of the children in that building is severely compromised. We have mold in the fourth and fifth grade hallway, which is not being addressed, with dehumidifiers in the classroom. They had fuzzy carpet as the summer ended, and we're just told to shampoo and clean it again. Air quality in the basement, of course, was addressed. The toilet issues on the pink hall, as we call it, are also not being addressed in the near future, so we have sanitation issues with that. The facility condition index put Ferry Farm at 96.8%. In 2007, it was recommended that the cost of renovation would not exceed 70% of a replacement, but yet, in 2017, it was, updated assessment showed the level needed by 2022 was about 90% of the cost to replace. And we're not even going to take care of all the needs for that school by 2022 with the current phases of renovation. And I think Ferry Farm, if it took, went to a 950, could be a help to some of the seating issues that we currently have in the county, still staying within this $31 million budget potentially, since we are going to build it on the property, not needing new property. And then, when we need 18, we have a couple hundred seat buffer before we need that, and in addition to the redistricting that we're doing. So, I just really feel like we need to look at this in totality again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Randall. Anyone else on my left?
Paul Waldowski, Eight Picket Lane. All right, let's start with the hospital. Spring fever. Okay, you got the fever, and remember, he said that you can talk when you go there, so you don't even have to walk. The President's Day sign is still outside. Remember, George's birthday is really February 22nd, three days from today. Ferry Farm is the only elementary school in the George Washington District. They have a school board member with one school. There are 29 other schools in the county. I don't even have that written down. I know there's five high schools, eight middle schools, and 17 elementary schools. And it's interesting for me to learn about the $31 million. You have, they've done enough analysis. I believe when they were looking for 35 acres to replace Moncur Elementary, there was a $35 million price tag on that new school. But you all know about schools because, you know, the Stafford High School is 65 million. You tore down a perfectly good $40 million asset. What can I say? Also, let me give you some pothole reports. Walpole and Mount Ararat have two potholes. They, I think, are within one and a half miles of two of the supervisors. That should enlighten all of you if you don't think we're gerrymandered. You know, our ex-governor backs redistricting reform. I just love when politicians come out of the woodwork and they want to back something. I think he needs to go back to his log cabin out in the Appalachian Mountains out there. I love it that you can talk about any subject or issue. Well, I don't have no issues. I keep reminding you, there are no issues. You're elected for four years. You have to go under Dylan's rule. You have an opportunity to make a difference, so here you are. I can't wait till this evening, you know? The TDR comes up. I have to find that in my computer, so that'll be interesting to talk about. And this evening, I'll enlighten you all about what's called anchor property and redevelopments. Amazon should have woken you all up about those aspects. And finally, let me keep reminding you, the Chesapeake watershed is a very important aspect of this county. We have developments or redevelopments that are trashing our buffered areas, and no one's even concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Waldowski. Anyone else in the chamber that'd like to address their board? Anyone else at all? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Reports by board members, and I would ask that if you had, remind you, if you have any consent items to pull, do it now at your report time. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Cavalier.
I'll defer.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, I'll keep this brief there. Appreciate staff letting me do, and the board letting me do this by phone, and all your support during my family emergency, especially give thank you to the Stafford County Fire and Rescue with their help with that issue. The one issue that I want to make sure I publicize is my town hall meeting on the Rappahannock River. As you know, we've been having a great deal of flooding, which has impacted River Road and the community. So, we are having it a week from tomorrow, Wednesday, February 27th, at Falmouth Elementary School from 6:30 to 8:00. The first half hour will be giving information, and then the rest of the time is for the citizens to give their ideas and their thoughts as to what we should be doing as we move forward. Staff has done an excellent job preparing for this, and if you are unable to attend, please let the county or myself know, and let us know your ideas. Thank you, Ms. Giles. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
Just quickly, we conducted our Bylaws Committee meeting last night. You'll see the product of that meeting here and our old business as we get, move forward. We also, every week during session, have a Legislative Committee meeting. We have, in some ways, been very successful. Not we, but Bob Thomas has carried the ball for us on a number of important issues for Stafford County, not the least of which is, it looks like we're going to get some relief on our restrictions, on our proffer bill that were passed in 2016 when I was down there and almost died over some of the remarks that were made at that. So, but Bob needs to be patted on the back for all the hard work he's done. He's done a great job. It's certainly a benefit to have someone in the legislature who actually has local government experience. You'd be surprised at how few members of the legislature actually have local government experience, and some of them claim local government experience that is like being the mayor of Hopewell for one term. You can, you can certainly see that being a supervisor, working in a county, Fast Grove County like Stafford, what that means. So, the only other thing I want to mention is, a friend of mine on the Prince William County Board of Supervisors, Mr. John Jenkins, passed away a little over a week ago, and Mr. Jenkins was a real statesman, and he was a great, great individual and a hard worker. He was on that board, I think, for 30 years or so.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six years, and he was, he was quite a gentleman, and he was a very, very influential person. He's the epitome of working across the line. John was a Democrat, old-school Democrat, you know, but he worked, he never asked or cared what party you were in. He would work very diligently to get things done, and I appreciate the work that I was able to do with him, and we're going to miss him. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mrs. Mauer.
Yes, really quickly. We attended the VRE meeting, Mr. Dudenheffer and I, as well as a PRTC meeting. There is going to be a slight reorganization. This is something that has been very contentious within PRTC and has been the subject of much discussion over the last year. During this time, through attrition, the reorganization that we approved last Tuesday, or last Thursday, my apologies, will only affect about three people. And so, it's, it's been a long time coming. This is one of two reorganizations that we're looking at PRTC. The essential crux of it is, is they reduced bus service significantly during the budget crisis, but they didn't reduce staff. And so, and so that became very contentious. When people lose their jobs, it's very difficult, but PRTC, the staff there, is hiring recruiters to help these three people find new jobs and to even work with the contractor that does most of what these individuals were doing previously. Also, we have, oh, my apologies. Also was elected as chairman of the Finance and Budget Committee today. I want to thank my colleagues for that honor. There's a couple of items that are on our agenda today. One is the VPSA interest and the utilization of VPSA interest. The committee voted to support the recommendation by staff, and you will see that coming up. And we also discussed at great length the Ferry Farm Elementary School renovation. No recommendation came out of the committee, as the conversation lasted much longer than our committee time, and so we agreed that we would continue that discussion here for the full board. Also discussed the sale of county property. We're going to be sending out an expression of interest on some land that we own up at Quantico Corporate Center, and so anyone who is interested in commercial land, be on the lookout for that. It'll also be posted on CoStar. We own, how many acres up there, Mr. Foley? Roughly nine, I think?
I don't have that exact number.
Nine acres up there, and that'll be coming up for sale if anyone is interested in that property. Keep an eye out or contact county staff. In addition to that, we discussed the Vehicle Replacement Committee report, and I want to thank staff for taking a very judicious look at that and coming up with policies and procedures on our fleet and fleet replacement. and procedures on our fleet and fleet replacement. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I conclude my remarks.
Ms. Shelton.
Thank you. Within our consent agenda today, you'll notice that we have a proclamation for the Stafford County Hospital, a part of Mary Washington, for their ten years of service. I wanted to thank them and then provide some information that you may not be aware of that they're providing for us. For example, they employ five hundred and fifty-seven people, two hundred and twenty-eight that they've identified that are specific to putting that hospital here in Stafford County, and that accounts for a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars contribution. And I want to thank them for what they're doing. In addition, I think Acquahia is going to get that five K, just sharing that part. And then the other part that is really interesting for me is that NASCAR, did you guys know NASCAR was in Stafford County? Within the NASCAR world, all of the cars and all of the, I forgot what they're, the race shops, all of those are within North Carolina, because Charlotte is right there. And so the only one that is outside that just opened in Stafford County, and I got to go to their grand opening. And so that's Brandon Belt Motorsports. They operate the Xfinity Series number eighty-six. They didn't do so well at the Daytona five-hundred, but isn't it awesome that Stafford County is on the map for NASCAR? I thought it was amazing. Thank you.
Ms. Baumke.
Thank you. Just wanted to give a shout out to a woman, Crystal Cornwall. I don't know if any of you have followed what she did, but with our large military presence here in Stafford County and Quantico just being up the road, she testified on Capitol Hill last week about the poor condition of military housing throughout the nation. And she has really done a phenomenal job with this and taken it to a different level, where there are really, members of Congress are paying attention to what she said last week. Anyway, you could Google her, Crystal Cornwall. She actually lives in Mr. Dudenheffer's district and the Garrisonville district. So I think that military people throughout the nation will hopefully be seeing some changes to their conditions of where they live. I am the representative on the library board, and we did receive the library's final audit for two thousand and eighteen, and they did not have any material weaknesses. In fact, they did have an excellent audit. They did have an issue where they expended twenty-five thousand more dollars than they should have in their budget, and they used prior year fund balances to cover that. I do want to just let you know at my request, we are revising the agenda format of the trustee meetings so that that process is improved. And you will see that all of the agenda and meeting minutes are now on the library website. They have not been in years past. And we will be looking and discussing revisions to the bylaws and the outdated operational agreement over the next three to six months. Lastly, one of our partner agencies, the Rappahannock Council Against Sexual Assault, is hosting their unmaskered gala on Saturday evening, March thirtieth, at the Old Silk Mill. Tickets are seventy-five dollars apiece, and the proceeds go to educate our youth about sexual assault and healthy relationships. If you are interested in joining the event and the gala, you could go on to the R-Casa website. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
And Mr. Snellings.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As everybody knows, we've got some severe weather coming tomorrow morning. A lot of cheers in the back, I see. I'm not a weatherman, thank goodness. The old saying goes, when you die, you can come back as a weatherman, make three hundred thousand dollars, you don't have to be right. So what I'm saying is, this thing could change at any time. So when you're up tomorrow morning, whatever you're doing, make sure you check the weather. And please, if it's bad, stay off the road. Nothing's worth the consequences of having an accident in a bad storm. We've had a lot of comments about potholes, justifiably so. Each one of us are getting calls or emails on a daily basis about the potholes throughout the county. We've all been in touch with VDOT, and we're all getting basically the same answer. We've had a severe winter with water and snow and ice that creates potholes. You cannot put asphalt down in a pothole during the winter time because it does not take. So they use what is called a cold pack. And don't ask me to explain that, because I don't know what it means. All I do know it means, it's not permanent. So they'll put this in, and if it rains, it comes right back out. So they do have a plan for potholes, but I can tell you now, you're looking at springtime before they get into it seriously, because if they do it now, it's just not going to work. So bear with them just a little while longer. Thank you. And with that, report of the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report at this time.
Report of the county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We only have one item. It's an update on the Vehicle Replacement Program, which is a new program that we have recently established based upon some approvals in the budget this past year, where you set some money aside for us to take a full and comprehensive look at our fleet of vehicles and bring some efficiencies to how we manage those. Donna Olson, our senior budget analyst, is going to come and give you a brief overview. At this point, there is no action being requested of the board. This is basically an administrative procedure that we're following to more efficiently use our funds. So at this point, I'll have Donna come up and give you an overview.
Do I need to turn it on?
Computer, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Donna Olson with the Department of Finance and Budget, and I'm proud to present to you the results of the Vehicle finance, Vehicle Replacement Committee. The purpose of the committee was to look at the general fund, non-public safety vehicles, and give a recommendation for replacement, reprogram, and reduction of fleet. We reviewed a hundred and eleven vehicles, and this was for general fund, non-public safety only, did not include utilities or landfill. We reviewed them by age and mileage and anticipated mileage. The committee asked for vehicles two thousand and five and older be inspected by Fleet Services. Four vehicles were removed from service after inspections. Current policy states that vehicles with a hundred thousand miles and seven years of age will be given the highest priorities. Our assessment revealed vehicles to be replaced are between the ages of nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand and six with approximately one hundred to a hundred and forty thousand miles. We assess vehicles to be reprogrammed and reduced from fleet by reviewing vehicles with an anticipated mileage under three thousand miles for the coming year. The departments collectively provided eighteen vehicles for reprogramming and/or reduction of fleet. The Vehicle Replacement Committee is proposing the following: fifteen vehicles to be replaced, seven vehicles to be reprogrammed, and eleven vehicles to be reduced from the fleet. We are also recommending a rotation plan within the department to extend the life of the vehicles, standardizing the vehicles to maximize the usage throughout the organization, a social services replacement plan, and we are also recommending, as we reduce the overall size of our fleet now and in the future, to, a plan to upgrade and monitor the pool car fleet to give the organization an enhanced pool of fleet cars to maximize county-wide usage. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Thank you, Donna. And thank the committee, I know I speak for the entire board, the committee, for all the work they did on this. It was very much needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. County Administrator, is that all you have, sir?
Yes, sir.
Hearing no, anyone pull anything from consent agenda, I'll take a motion to approve the consent. Mr. Dudenheffer, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mauer, please cast your votes.
I say yes.
Tally the vote. Mr. Cohen said yes. That's seven, motion passes seven to zero. Unfinished business, Bylaws Committee. Consider amending Board of Supervisors bylaws and rules of procedure. Proposed Resolution R-19-43. Mr. Dudenheffer or Ms. Shelton?
The Bylaws Committee is made up of Ms. Shelton and myself, and I think Ms. Mauer, but Ms. Mauer was unable to attend our last meeting. But this has been actually ongoing since the organizational meetings we had last year. There was a great amount of discussion over the committees and how we deal with our committees and standing committees. And that, I think, is what took us a while to get to where we are today, to come to a consensus. But I'd ask Ms. McLendon, our county attorney, if she would highlight the changes that were being made.
Sure. The Bylaws Committee met on February eighth, and the changes that are represented in the board package are changes that are made since the bylaws were committed, excuse me, were submitted to the board for its previous review. There was changes to the use of committees. The committee's chairman will be setting the committee's agenda, and ultimately, it will be noted in the bylaws as the committee's advisory, and that no matter will essentially die with the committee. Further, it was requested that summaries of the committee actions will be provided to the board. I would note this is something that staff is currently doing, so it's not additional administrative work. Staff can handle it. Also, the Bylaws Committee has directed that annually the board consider a code of performance and include this in its bylaws. I would note that the code of performance is a separate item, but inclusion of the consideration of it annually at the organizational meeting is in the board's bylaws. At the last meeting, there was a request from a board member to note where the changes came from. So in Attachment Three, which you'll see is the bylaws highlighted, the yellow are changes recommended by staff. The changes highlighted in gray are also recommended by staff, but they're more organizational or clerical. And then the highlights in red are changes that were made as a result of the board's committee structure or the request for increased participation or transparency. Lastly, I would note that the clean bylaws is in Attachment Four, and they're dated as of today, and I will open the floor for any questions from the board.
Any questions?
Okay, there being none, then I'd like to move for acceptance of the bylaws as amended.
I have a motion, I have a second.
R-1956, is that it?
R-1943.
Where am I? Sorry. So I move for R-1943.
I have a motion by Mr. Dudenheffer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shelton. Any discussion? Ms. Baumke.
I would just like to say that this has been a real work in progress, and I think that we have really incorporated everything into these bylaws, and I think it's great. Even though it took us a few extra months, it was worthwhile, and I think they look great.
Thank you, Ms. Baumke. Anyone else? I want to echo what Ms. Baumke said and thank the committee. I know it was a lot of work. You put a lot of time and effort into it. And advise the public that this is, these bylaws are available online if you'd like to take a look at them. With that in mind, I'll cast your votes.
Yes.
Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Item number thirteen, Bylaws Committee. Consider adopting a two thousand and nineteen code of performance. Once again, I'll go to Mr. Dudenheffer, Ms. Shelton, and Ms. Mauer.
As...
Yeah, I didn't attend the meeting. My daughter was having surgery, so...
It happens. In conjunction with discussions on our bylaws and our efforts to refresh many of the agreements and everything that we have out there, we also looked at the Stafford County Board of Supervisors Code of Performance. This is a set of guidelines of what board, the expectations of the board as a whole of the actions and performance of each individual board member. In the past, we all would sign the document as kind of a tribute to the fact that we all attest and will live up to the standards that are set here. So the new, there's not a lot of, there weren't any changes, except for a little add-on at the bottom. So, but I'd like to read what they are and then propose that we pass them, and then also have individual board members actually sign the document. So it goes on our website, and the public can see exactly what we expect of ourselves, and you can concur and, well, hold us to that standard. I'll go ahead and read. Whereas the board desires to endorse a code of performance to convey to each other, as well as to the citizens of the county, its commitment to conduct the business of the board and the county in a professional and dignified manner. Now therefore be it resolved by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this, the nineteenth day of February two thousand and nineteen, that the following code of performance be, and it hereby is adopted as follows, the Stafford County Board of Supervisors Code of Performance. Recognizing that persons holding a position of public trust are under constant observation and recognizing that maintaining the integrity and dignity of public office is essential for securing a high level of public confidence in our institutions of government, each member of the Board of Supervisors pledges to adhere to the following performance standards. One, make every effort to attend all regularly scheduled and called meetings, as well as committee meetings relevant to my office. Two, make a conscious effort to be prepared for each meeting relevant to my office. Three, maintain an attitude of courtesy toward colleagues, county staff, and citizens during meetings, discussions, and deliberations. Four, be tolerant, allowing colleagues, county staff, and citizens sufficient opportunity present their views and perspectives. Five, be respectful and attentive, avoiding comments, body language, or distracting behavior to convey a message of disrespect or a lack of interest. Six, avoid the use of abusive, intimidating, or threatening language and gestures directed at colleagues, county staff, and citizens. Seven, create a positive atmosphere during public meetings wherein citizens and county staff feel welcomed and comfortable as participants and/or observers. Eight, respect, honor, and adhere to all local, state, and federal laws affecting my elected office. Nine, discharge the duties and responsibilities of my office in an impartial manner without fear or prejudice toward any person or group. Ten, the witness behavior of the Board of Supervisors is honoring this code of performance. Will be evaluated annually at the board's planning, meeting, and retreat. Eleven, and last, maintain and keep confidential closed session information and information disclosed to the board under legally permissible confidentiality agreements. Be it further resolved that this code of performance is enforced by each member's responsibility and commitment to upholding this code and embraces its provisions. Conduct not in conformance with this code will be reviewed and subject to progressive disciplinary measures by the board. And be it still further resolved that the board's commitment to enact and honor this code of performance is hereby endorsed by the following signatures. So move.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by Mr. Dudenheffer, a second by Ms. Mauer. Any comments from the board? Ms. Mauer.
So I appreciate this code of performance. I think it's really important for us to review and reflect how we treat each other, how we treat our citizens, and how we treat county staff. That's important. When I first got on the board, I was, as one staff member told me, passionate, and he used air quotes to describe me that way. My language was harsh, and Chairman Bob Thomas at the time pulled me aside, and he expressed his concerns. And he was right, so I changed. And so as we move forward with this code of performance, we should pay particular attention to item number six, because this board has not been its best over the last several meetings, and it's been concerning, it's been escalating. And while I understand passion, I myself have been, you know, subject to passion. No board member should have to endure being screamed obscenities at or endure threats due to disagreement on policy issues. And so I appreciate the work that you've done, Mr. Dudenheffer. I appreciate the work that Ms. Shelton has done, and I'm fully in support of this code of performance and look forward to us being a better board in the future.
Any other comments from the board? Ms. Baumke.
So over the weekend, I was looking up the term cyberbullying. We were fortunate that our children never had any issues with bullying when we were raising them in Stafford County public schools. So I've never really had to look at that. So let me tell you what the definition is. Defined as willful and repeated harm inflicted through the use of computers, cell phones, and other electronic devices. Basically, these are incidents where adolescents use technology to harass, threaten, humiliate, or otherwise hassle their peers. Bullying claims can arise at any level of the organization, from the governing body through to coworkers, but how the governing body sets the tone for the organization is of pivotal importance. And that is why I believe the code of conduct is so important. And while this code of conduct does not provide any action that the board can take if a member is... is out of line, it certainly sets the tone for how we're going to do the county's business. And for that reason, I will support this.
Any other comments? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. Cast your vote.
Yes.
Tally the vote. Passes seven to nothing, even though it doesn't show, Mr. Cohen. I did hear a yes out of the box over there, so he's good to go.
One point of order. Marcia, the copy you gave me is the one you wouldn't want to pass and be signed, or do we have a...
You have peanuts on it.
I just... Is that one of the items on this list I'm not supposed to do?
Mr. Dudenheffer, we can prepare a clean copy and have it ready for signature before the end of the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marcia. Item number four. Is everybody ready here?
Yes, sorry.
Item number 14, Finance and Budget Ferry Farm Elementary School Project Review and Budget Approval, Proposed Resolution R-19-58. And who's giving that? Dr. Kizner, are you? Now, Dr. Kizner, we know the weather's coming tomorrow. You got an announcement to make here? I mean, you got a lot of people waiting. I mean, you could make us a number-one show.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I really did appreciate your comments. People just need to pay attention, and soon as I get out of here, I will look at the weather. And I do want Ms. Shelton to know, when I was in Martinsville as superintendent, I had the privilege at the Martinsville Speedway to do, "Mats Duck Your Engine" and do that flag thing, which is pretty cool for my kid that was born in the Bronx, so that was good. Again, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors, because I know usually when you see school personnel, we're asking for something, and yes, we're going to be asking for something again. But I do want to acknowledge that you have been great partners. I know of at least four projects since I've been here. Mont Cure, North Star, Garrisonville, and AG Wright are all taking place right now. And that's, when it's school construction, it's never going to be inexpensive. So I do want to acknowledge your support of our school system, and tonight, well, it's afternoon, what we're again going to be seeking your support is to start a project that I know has been discussed the last couple of years. And what we have done the last couple of weeks is worked very closely with the county staff to provide the information that we hope will help you make a decision tonight. So Chris Fulmer, our executive director of finance, will do the presentation.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Marcia, does this work? Thanks. So, as Dr. Kizner stated, I appreciate you guys inviting us here and giving us an opportunity to give you a little bit of the history on Ferry Farm and what the school board has most recently proposed in December. So we're going to use the opportunity to discuss the history, the need, and the plan for Ferry Farm. So for the history, the dark blue on the screen represents the original building for Ferry Farm Elementary School, and that was in 1955. Subsequently, in 1966, the second, or the first addition was built. And you can see where it's actually separated from the initial building, and it actually required exiting the building to enter the other one. And then the third, and second addition and then the third addition were added in '88 and '99. So the need, you guys have been provided with a pretty detailed list of some of the, what each of the phases would cover, and more specifically, Phase 1 and Phase 2, as far as the code efficiencies, future safety, trying to update the ed specs, and update the building system life cycles. So a few of the things, just to point out for ADA purposes, adding an elevator will be in addition, some additional ADA ramps, changes to the bathrooms to make them ADA acceptable, or accessible, updates the mechanical and electrical work, including the plumbing, and enhancements to the fire and sprinkler systems. So the architects came forward with a four-phase plan, and what they initially came forward with was targeting the age and condition of the building. So they targeted, Phase 1 was to target the original building, which was, as I already mentioned, a 1955 original build. And there were several aspects to that, which included relocating the main office, which, if you're looking at the screen, is on the far right of the original building, adding a security vestibule. And then Phase 2 was addressing the 1966 wing, the first-floor basement and the second floor as well. And then they had a Phase 3 and 4, which were the '88 and '99 renovations. Little bit more detail on Phase 1. So the light-red pink color is the renovation of the 1955 wing, which I already mentioned adds security vestibule, also relocates the main office to the center of the building instead of to the far-right side of the building when looking at the face of the building. It creates an actual clinic space. The clinic space in the original building was very small, and they needed the office space as the building grew, so the clinic actually moved into one of the classrooms across the hall from the main office area. As far as ed specs, it renovates the library, and then additionally in the Phase 2, we address ed specs. So it updates the HVAC system, but that is only the 1955 wing, so we'll get into the 1966 wing in a few minutes. But the phase, original Phase 1 only addressed the HVAC system in the original building in 1955. And then upgrades plumbing, and as I mentioned, the ADA accessibility. So now in the circled area is the additional space that Phase 1 adds. So it adds additional collaborative space, increases the size of music and art, and adds an elevator so that you can access multiple levels of the building.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Mauer has a question.
What is the approximate cost of that addition, if you were to parse that out? So I looked through the list of items, and what I couldn't... Sorry, my mic wasn't on. What I couldn't determine was, when I looked through the laundry list of items and how you broke out those costs, it seemed like the addition 7650 was kind of lumped in with, let's say, upgrading the plumbing, and so if you were just looking at the $7,650, how much is that?
Approximately $3 million.
It's approximately $3 million. Okay, thank you.
So, the elevator access is added in the red area, so you can get down to the basement of the 66th wing and the multiple levels of the additional space there. So a little bit of history and the plan going forward. So the total project cost that was included in the CIP was $10.8 million. This amount was based on affordability in the CIP. Breaking out the construction piece of that, 8.1 of that was for the general contractor, and then additional money for furniture, fixtures, and equipment, the lease base, modular classroom lease base, and then the other third-party cost comes to a total construction budget as shown above of 9.5. But I broke that out to draw attention to the $8.1 million that was for the general contractor. Here's a little bit more of the breakdown of the general contractor costs as far as the estimates to address the code efficiencies and safety issues and building life cycles, and also the ed specs.
And that ed specs, that's the addition?
That's predominantly the addition, yes.
Okay.
So, the architects actually came to us and said, "If you can get any additional funds, instead of making any changes to your original space in Phase 1, we really think you should take those funds and devote them to the 1966 wing." And they gave us an estimate. If you can do the basement of the 96th wing and address HVAC units, it'd be approximately the $1.98 million that comes in front of you today. So some of the items that are addressed in the increased scope of the 1966 basement is the air quality concerns that have been vocalized in the past. So in the early 2000s, there was a mold and mildew issue that was more or less unrelated to air quality, but also was related to some water damage. That was remediated, but there was still a perception by staff and students that the space in that basement did not have adequate air circulation, and...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cavalier.
Chris, you said the same thing in the committee meeting, the perception again. And that's where I want to get away from here. We're not fixing a perception. We have to fix a real problem, if there is one. And so I thought we had determined earlier that there was not a health issue that was detrimental to people being in that building due to the HVAC.
Yeah, so we do not think the space is harmful for students. But at the same time, we have staff and students that will not stay in the basement full-time. So they spend half-days in there, hour, two hours, and they go back up into the regular circulated area of the building on the second floor of the 66th wing or the rest of the building. So there have been no additional tests that have been done to test the air quality, but we believe that it's more of getting fresh air into the building, so into that 1966 basement. So with the additional HVAC system, it will be developed in a way that will pull air into that basement, outside, fresh air.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
I just, clarification, based on some comments I had made to me as we left our meeting upstairs. The $1.9 million you want to use internal will do the things that are on the air quality concerns, HVAC system, poor learning environment, whatever, I'm sure, not sure what that means. Limited daylight, I guess that means adding ways to see daylight, and inefficient, underutilized space program. Those look kind of squishy for me, but the $1.9 million will accomplish all of that.
Yes, sir. So you can actually...
I guess what I'm leading to, and I'm not trying to be funny here or anything, but in a year from now, we're not going to come back and say that we need a HVAC system, or now we have inefficient use. We have air quality, but we can't use the facilities in the basement. So we're not, we're saying that the $1.9 will do all of these things.
Correct. That is the current projection from the architects, yes. That is the plan.
One other question. Has the school board closed the basement? Wasn't there a comment at their last board meeting?
Right now, the basement is open. In the redistricting, the school board has asked the consultants to come with two plans. One, with the basement open, and one without, with the basement not open. Again, so I just want to just make sure I address both questions, which I think they're tied together. The HVAC system, we don't believe the airflow is dangerous. We don't believe the airflow is proper for that lower level. I think some of us who might have replaced our HVAC systems at home did not wait till the air got dangerous, and then we've replaced it. The analysis of that HVAC system, which is somewhat of age, is that the airflow, that wing of Ferry Farm, you know, is below ground. You hardly have any lights. You have one side of the basement that has like half-lights from windows. So the board does have concerns that having three academic programs down there to continue it and have staff down there may not be a smart move. So the board, school board is looking at a plan with the redistricting that would take the three programs that are downstairs, gifted special ed and reading pullout, and put those programs on the main level, and then shut down the lower level.
But even if you get the $1.9...
$1.9, that project stays open, downstairs stays open.
So as part of the current redistricting, you will move forward and just keep those programs downstairs?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Bonkey's next, Mr. Cohen, and then Ms. Mauer, and I'll come back to you. Ms. Bonkey.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand, because I remember back in the day when we had issues with Grafton Village, and this was way before your time, Dr. Kizner, but we had some mold issues at Grafton with blackboards that, when they took them off, they cleaned them all up and put them back on. We had issues at Falmouth, same at Stafford Elementary. You know, it was the classic HVAC system that was put in the schools with the low bidder back in 1955, '60s. So, but what I want to understand is, when was the last time we tested the air in this basement? I understand there, different people have different triggers for allergens and different things. So what may be, you know, irritate one person's nasal passage may not somebody else. But when was the last time that this air was tested down in the basement? Because I physically, I walk through this school, you know, it's just got that moldy smell to it, and it's not ideal. Is it dangerous? I don't, it sounds like it's not, but I personally, and I think the community deserves to know, when was this last tested?
Yeah, so the last time a formal, official, outside contractor came and tested was 2005. So, and they determined at that point, there's no dangerous situation. We have a protocol that if somebody, so mold is sometimes tied to HVAC. A lot of times, it's tied to humidity. So it's not only just HVAC. I know that from a personal, I shouldn't say because I'm trying to sell that house, but, so, I strike that. I didn't really say that. So, so...
I understand what you're saying, but that was 13 years ago.
Yeah, I think the point is well-taken. If, regardless of the outcome, I mean, obviously, if we get a new HVAC, maybe not as necessary, but still, I think, for whatever cost, which I'm sure it's not a significant cost, getting an updated air quality analysis probably makes great sense.
I think that would be important. Thank you.
I agree.
Ms. Mauer.
Okay, so I'm trying to wrap my brain around the prioritization of the construction project. And so we're adding 7,000 square feet. How much capacity does that 7,000 square feet add, or is it just an ed spec thing?
Just ed spec.
Okay. So here's where I'm concerned. We're spending $3 million to add 7,000 square feet. That doesn't add any capacity, and we're foregoing a $2 million renovation that would actually maintain the capacity in the school. My mind is having, given how we talk about capacity all the time, and we're all growing out of our schools, my mind is having a difficult time wrapping around why these choices are being made or prioritized in the way they are, when particularly, capacity has always been at the forefront, you know, increasing or maintaining capacity. Why would you make that a secondary item?
So I can speak a little bit to the history with the architects, and then say that the original plan, I believe, for the Phase 1 had additional classroom space, but after the revised plan, they had to be eliminated in order to fit the actual renovations within the budget. And then the architects came forward and said, so rewind a little bit. The original Phase 1 was developed based on age and condition of that 1955 wing.
Right.
And then the Phase 2 was going to be the 1966 wing. So after they looked at the Phase 1, worked up, you know, within the $10.8 million, and ended up, after the first estimates came in, over the $10.8, they went back and revised it. And while they were doing that, asked us to say, after looking at the 1966 wing in further detail, said, "If you guys can find any additional funds, it really should be dedicated toward the 1966 wing."
Well, and I appreciate, I appreciate that the architect, and if I understand architects correctly, they are, they get a percentage of the project. So of course, they're going to ask you if you can find additional money, because they make more money. I mean, that's how the whole design-build thing works. My concern is, is that we are in Phase 1 prioritizing a non-capacity enhancing project, i.e. the 7,000 square feet. And we talked about, in the CIP, $10 million was the budget, and yet they're going to shut down the basement if we don't approve the extra $2 million, which could be paid for with the $3 million from the addition. So this, it almost sounds like the school board's trying to hold us hostage in this whole redistricting thing, you know, to get what they want, and then, and then what they need, as opposed to focusing on what they need. Am I, they've recently said that they're going to shut down the basement and not include it in the redistricting if they don't get the additional funding. Is that correct?
A few weeks ago, they asked the consultants to come back with the three additional plans with the basement excluded from the capacity.
In case they don't get the additional funding for the basement?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes, thank you. I guess it's Mr. Fulmer. I just want to check a couple of things to make sure. So in the initial Phase 1, and I think you just said, there were additional capacity, but one of the things... But one of the things that often has been raised by our board is that when the cost would actually exceed what has been appropriated, there's been a mindset to just go ahead and keep adding. And am I correct in understanding that in this project, when the initial estimates of the cost came in, that doing what was desired would not meet what this board had authorized last June, um, the, the architect and the school board and staff went back to revise it to stay within what this board was saying it wanted?
Correct.
So, and, and if I remember correctly, we were having conversations, um, last year, last June, that the whole idea of the additional capacity up on that wing would take the students out of the basement, so that the, uh, in the short term, the students would not be down in that environment. So there always was a discussion dating back to at least last June, that for the situation that Ms. Bonkey was talking about, about the air, and students not being down in the basement all day long, that was part of the impetus for doing the additional classrooms in Phase 1.
Not sure if that was a question, or if you're looking for confirmation?
I'm just double-checking. I mean, I think, if memory serves me, that's, that was the, one of the impetuses, was to get the students out of the basement. So that's not a new thing, that's, it's an old thing. And then, um, I guess always in the discussions dating back to prior to last June, was it not the desire to deal with the issues down in the basement, period?
Mr. Cohen, is that in the form of a question?
Yes, sir. Isn't that, wasn't that one of the desires, was Phase 1, we deal with the old part of the building, in large part because of the safety compatibility of the fact that the safety entrance was not handicapped accessible in that one of the primaries, there was a very tragic incident. So Phase 2 was going to be dealing with that basement regardless, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and, and so I just wanted to make sure I, I had the timeline correct, that these two elements have always been out there, that doing the basement and the air conditioning and dealing with rooms has always been in the discussion.
Yes, the, the 1966 wing, the basement and the second story of that were in, always in Phase 2 of the initial projection.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so I have a question on that, because been on finance and budget, and CIP since I got on this board, Mr. Foley, when, did any of these phases hit our CIP? I, where were they in the CIP? If this was always the intention, um, I don't see how they're being budgeted, at least not with bond funds, through the CIP.
Mr. Chairman, um, I don't know that I have an exact recollection of any phasing, but certainly there were not four phases in the last version of the CIP that came forward this past fall.
Okay, and that, and we were in the joint CIP process, so the schools were intimately involved in, in the CIP at that particular juncture?
Last spring, but not this past fall.
Okay.
Because they didn't participate in the process.
But when we agreed to the 10.8 million and put that in the CIP, were there any additional phases added to the CIP as is being discussed right now?
I would have to confirm with budget staff on that issue about the adopted CIP from last year, and whether there was any phasing of the school included in it. I don't believe that there were, but I think, uh, okay, I, no, there, there were no phases in it before.
Mr. Cavalier.
I was just going to answer it the same way. During the many, many discussions we had about this, there were absolutely no phases, there were absolutely no options. We provided 10.8 million dollars as an approved CIP in a joint process with the school board for the renovation of the entire Ferry Farm Elementary School. That was the total sum amount for the whole renovation of the school. Not a single penny more, and no more phases and no more options.
What I, what I'd like to do is let you go ahead and finish your presentation, and then we'll dig a little deeper.
Sure. Thank you. So the renovation for the 1966 wing replaces the HVAC system for both levels, although it's only renovating the actual basement, increasing the natural lighting, the elementary ed specs are addressed, and then creating efficient learning spaces. And as mentioned, there are currently learning spaces down there, but trying to, one, keep them down there and get better use out of them. The total additional Phase 1 cost is the 1.988 million dollars, which, as discussed, Phase 2 would see a reduction in that scope and cost. So the school board met in December and came up with a plan for how to address this with, one of their goals was to not ask for additional funds from the Board of Supervisors. So they identified the school division carryover funds from FY '18, and then took funded, VPSA funded 3R projects out of the CIP and pushed them forward a year. So the repair track at Mountain View High School, and then interior finishes at HH Pool Middle School, the three of those combined is 2.5 million dollars. The additional funds needed is the 1.988, so the difference of the 577 actually results in additional debt capacity in the CIP.
Thank you. Any question, any further questions? Dana, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dudenheffer.
This is a question for all of you guys. I, I'm going to agree with Mr. Cavalier. I, you know, I've only been back on the board for a year, I have no recollection of discussions of phasing or additional phasing. And, and as you, you know that our bucket is full for the amount of debt we can carry. So what you got, what it looks like you've done is you've had these phasing into, partially into out-years, and are already talking about committing our debt capacity that we don't really have for those future years. My, my point would be is that I was under the impression, like Mr. Cavalier, that we talked about the 10.8. The 1.9, you know, we always reallocate end-of-year funds, and, and personally, I have no problem with that. But if the only, the only money you're going to get from renovations for, for this elementary school is the 10.8 plus 1.9, and that was all the money you're going to get, is the work you're going to do, what you would do if that was all that was there?
Yes, so the answer is yes. So this is how I understand what might have evolved. The first five years of the CIP is what you guys budget. We were told, or at least I, maybe I misunderstood, anything after year five, six to 10, you could, you could put on your CIP, and the CIP this year, because of timing issues, was, was not going to be considered. So the board went ahead and did the additional phases. You are correct. They did adopt it. And as I said earlier today, that needs to be vetted. In my judgment, there are other schools that I would probably come to the school board and talk about needs before I began to talk about state, phases or stages, three and four. So the 10.8 and the 1.9, and Wendy, I'm going to have a recording of this, so in a few years, remember the code of conduct that we all said. I am stating that that will suffice, suffice to meet Ferry Farm's needs, okay? And that's in the budget cycle of the first five years, okay? Six to 10, I would just dismiss any stages or phases that we have put on that CIP, because, that's, that's not what I would recommend to the school board.
Mr. Chairman.
Just one last comment, and, and is that I think you do, you do a disservice to the public, because now you've put out that you've approved all of this extra work, the rebuild of the Hartwood Elementary School, all these new items are on your CIP, and what it does is it makes us, you, you kick them over to us and we have to say no, because we don't have the debt capacity or whatever, we have competing projects. Right now, there are significant projects in this county that we are foregoing in order to try and fund the needs of the schools right now, so I, that's just-
I totally, let me, let me just say that, if you don't mind, this is the first place I've ever worked where we did a 10-year CIP. Truthfully, anything beyond five years, I would give very little credibility to the, to the amounts, and other needs develop, okay? So years one to five, you need for purposes of determining your budget, your debt, and so on. Six through 10, and that's why I believe somewhat the school board struggled so much in coming up with a final CIP plan, was those years pushed out, six through 10. So I, I know that there's committees that, between the school board and Board of Supervisors, and I would highly encourage to have this on the agenda and get some agreement, do we need to even do six through 10? And if I'm wrong, tell me wrong, but the way I understand it, there's no money attached to six through 10.
Mr. Foley, I think you had a-
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify a couple of points, and, um, not a disagreement with Dr. Kizner here, but it's some clarification on our policy and our approach. In the past, there has been a balanced 10-year CIP, and that is what existed last spring when we didn't have any phases. So we did require 10 years of information, and we did not have phases, we only had the one project. I agree with Dr. Kizner that a 10-year projection is a very difficult thing to do, particularly when you're balancing revenues that are so far out. So what we did this past year, as we've come into the fiscal year we're in now, and this falls process, was that we said, we will balance revenues in the CIP for five years. So projects and revenues will balance in the first five years. We will continue to have a needs assessment for project, for year six through 10, we won't balance them to revenues. So I think under any scenario, we're still going to want a look beyond five years about what's on the horizon, which is where the phases, even if we didn't balance, if, if the schools intended to do some other phases, I didn't want you to make a decision on one piece and not know what might be on the horizon, even if we didn't balance it to revenues. So again, the clarity here is, I, I agree with Dr. Kizner that we really should only do a five-year CIP and balance it. But that doesn't mean that we don't want to know what's beyond that, so we know what's on the horizon, because obviously, the high school and some of these other projects, well, the high school's actually moving up, but the elementary school, if we don't have those conversations about hundred-million-dollar projects in years beyond five, our five-year financial planning will miss some things. But again, I do agree, we don't, we shouldn't be balancing it.
Yeah, no, I understand your point too, yeah.
Ms. Bonkey.
So I, I feel that the 10-year CIP is really important, and that's a conversation for another day, especially in a growing community like Stafford County. But, but, but that's my opinion, just because I think it's important for people to see what's out there in year six through 10, so they understand what kinds of projects we're looking at as a community. But, but I understand, you know, what you guys basically just said. I'd like to know how many of my board colleagues have actually walked through Ferry Farm?
Raise my hand.
Okay. Way to go, Tom. So I'm just going to say that while the process, well, this isn't a question for you, Dr. Kizner, I'll bring it up during discussion, never mind. Thank you.
Ms. Mauer.
Okay, so this is a question for you, Mr. Foley, because I almost had a passionate moment when, um, when we're talking about just looking at five years, because let's, let's talk about 140-million-dollar high school. Can we come up with all the debt capacity if we weren't looking 10 years out within that five-year window, because, you know, the high school pops up? It would become, we, is it possible, if we weren't looking at it from a 10-year perspective, that we would spend all of our debt capacity in that five-year window, leaving us unable to, to build that high school?
Certainly.
Okay, so-
And again, I think best practice would say, you at least do a needs assessment beyond the five years, even if you don't balance it, because you could use up your debt capacity and not realize you have a critical project just on the horizon. So I think the process we have in place now, which has just been revised, is really best practice.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Cavalier. Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle.
Dr. Kizner, um, actually, I agree with some of the things that you've said, because I do understand, in same way with Mr. Foley, that it is impossible for us to project some things further out. But I also understand that we need to have that horizon because, because of our debt capacity. As Mr. Cavalier, as all of us have actually said, we don't have the money. And so whenever you, you, anyone comes to us and starts asking for more, it causes us lots of consternation. So having said that, one of my issues that I saw, two issues, sir, is that in the projections, it indicates that it's a rough order of magnitude cost, well, that's 50 to 100% off. And so I don't know if you're going to be coming to us next year and go, we need another 5 million because our estimate was incorrect, so that bothers me. The second thing is, I think that might be missed, I know you're new here, but we have been asking the board, you guys, all of you, to give us some transparency into your decision-making. And so that is, like, why did you choose this particular project over another? Why this particular requirement in that building over another? So what you heard earlier at the Fab meeting and today is our concern about that, because all those health issues have been told to us. And so when we look at your projections, we look at what's coming in, your 3R projects, we look at your CIP, it seems odd that all of a sudden, a health-related issue is going to come up from us and make a change, when last, just as early as last year, that was not indicated to us. And so I just wanted to ask you, as you go forward, as you work with us in the future, to please start thinking about that transparency for all of our constituencies, the same people. Why did you choose one thing over another? So that way, we can cut down some of the communications and frankly, discourse that I don't think we always really need to have. And so, thank you, sir.
Yeah, just two things. I do appreciate this notion of having to look out in the future. You're right, high school's a good example, if a high school costs 120, 130 million, and we're saying to 2030, you want to get your hands on it. I would absolutely tell you that I really feel, and I, I feel like I've established a good working relationship with Mr. Foley, that our staffs need to be working together. So you guys have confidence, we have confidence, and also, there's a check and balance, okay? So I'm just sharing with you that I believe, and Mr. Foley could, you know, speak for himself, for what we're presenting you tonight, we have worked closely the last few weeks, and I think that's at least the beginning of a model that I, as you, who have a very important job to decide how you're going to spend taxpayers' money, that you'll know that that's been well-vetted, that we're just not coming up with something attaching a number. I'm just going to say this respectfully, when we put in that 10.8, we were off. As Mr. Cohen was saying, when we got the cost estimator from Warrenton, Farquhar County, give us exactly what cost, we were off, what, what, how much were we off? How much? We were off almost $2 million. On 10.8, that's a lot of money to be off, okay? In my judgment, that's a high percentage to be off. So that's an example where, again, I'm not blaming anybody, because I just want to move forward, okay? Blaming, never's really been a solution. But I think, again, before we put numbers in, I want to have, and, and I totally agree, architects, they do have a incentive for some of this, these projects too. So, and an independent, external person to review our numbers before we put it on a CIP plan, to me, makes greater sense than having a 10.8 project to know that it came in almost at 12.8, which I would have, I would lose confidence if I'm sitting with you, and I would lose confidence with the school board for staff members who are saying one thing and sharing another thing. Saying all that, the 10.8 and the 1.9 resolves the Ferry Farm issue, and I'm standing here on, uh, whatever today's date is, on the 19th, and making that statement. So I would hope the, the board would consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Kizner. Uh, Mr. Cavalier, and after Mr. Cavalier, if we've gotten comments other than questions, I would ask that you hold those until we have a motion. Uh, Mr. Cavalier.
And, and Dr. Kizner, thank you very much for, for stating that explicitly, that you're comfortable with the 10.8, with the addition of the 1.9, that would be basically redirected funds and not new monies that we would have to find, because, you know, we, we have to operate the CIP within the parameters of our debt capacity. And I, as I look at the school's new CIP- And I, as I look at the school's new CIP, it's, it's around $300 million, give or take, just adding numbers in my head. And that doesn't include any of the county projects, and we have some, the courthouse and some other major ticket items. And so I don't know, when we factor in our projects, what projects will survive on the school's CIP. And then, because we have to meet the debt capacity guidelines, and Andrea knows those, I'm sure, and could tell us right now, but we're going to get to that later anyhow. So at this point, you know, I can, I reluctantly, you know, at this point, you know, I'm going to agree to the additional 1.9. I'd already approved the, the 10.8. And I, knowing what, hearing what you said, makes me comfortable that we can do this for this amount of, of money at this point. I know things come up that may, may change it a little bit, but I can't, at this point, sign up to the future phases, two, three, four, because that adds another $20 million that we may or may not have. So again, thank you very much for, for saying that, sir.
Mr. Snellings? I'm sorry? Mr. Cohen has a comment he would like to make. Ms. Mauer first. No more comments until after a motion. We're kind of outside of our bylaws here. If there are any questions, I'll entertain a question. Ms. Mauer.
Dr. Kizner, I'm sorry. I would get that.
I've been called a lot worse.
Mrs. Mauer, please turn your microphone on.
Man, I am just not doing well tonight. Can we forego the $7,000 addition and, and take care of that basement, if the addition is, is $3 million and the basement is 1.9 million, and still stay within the 1 point, or the 10.8?
I really think that addition is necessary. It's more than, it's, again, and I know when the question was asked, if you were in the building, you said yes. That, that building just needs a better place for children to learn, and that's what we're going to be able to do for that amount of money. I, I think the 10.8 and the 1.9 gives us a very good school down in Ferry Farm. I really do.
No other additions?
I'm just being honest with you.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Dr. Kizner, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
What was the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Cohen.
Yes, I would like to make a motion for R-19-58 with the amended additional money of $1,988,000. And if it gets seconded, I'd like to be recognized to make a few comments, please.
Rest assured, everybody will be recognized.
Yes, I.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to amend the motion and ask Mr. Cohen, maybe we can do this as a friendly amendment.
I have one as well. The way the language in the resolution is reading, talking about Phase 1 is indicative of Phase 2, Phase 3, Phase 4, and so I would like it to be kind of a solid 10.9 with the 1.9 addition, and that's it. Because the way, the way the resolution's reading with Phase 1, that just, it, it gives the impression that we're, we're anticipating all the other phases.
Yeah, the specific language says, as identified, additional phases of renovation.
Yes.
And I object to that language.
Mr. Chairman, that is, simply because of the way this was brought forward, I think that would clarify the issue for sure. Taking that out.
Moving all of the phases.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. McLennan, are we, since we don't have a second, are we okay to do what we're doing here?
Oh, may I second it?
She did second, okay, I apologize. Okay, where are we? What's the amendment? And I guess the first question is, Mr. Cohen, do you accept the?
I'm looking at the R-1958, and I see where it mentions specifically Phase 1. Are you saying that you want to have removed from it underneath there the large project list and remove the other items, or what specific language are you trying to change it to?
Removing all references to phasing from the resolution, I believe.
Three and four?
All phasing, all phasing.
So again, I'm, I would like clarification. So are you saying Phase 1 plus the 1.9 or not?
No, I understand.
No, Mr. Cohen, what he's saying, what we're saying is, or what Ms. Mauer, Mr. Dudenheffer is saying, remove any language from the resolution that refers to phasing, as we will not be phasing. There will be, there will not be a 2, 3, or 4 phase. Dr. Kizner's made it pretty clear to us that if we approve the 1.9 in addition to the 10.8, Ferry Farm will be fine. And if I'm wrong on that, somebody correct me.
That's correct. That's what I understand.
Total amount.
So you're, that, what you're being asked to do in the resolution is to prove a budget, not appropriation. And what's been proposed is that it, it be the 10.8 plus the 1.988 as the total budget approved for this project.
Correct.
Another question. The, in the board packet, we're talking about 7,000 square foot addition, and in the resolution, it says a 9,000 square foot addition. Which is it?
I would, I would look to school staff to clarify.
7,065 square feet?
7,650.
Oh, 7,650, okay.
And I have a, if I could ask Mr. Fulmer a question, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Cohen.
Chris, if the language is, as Mr. Dudenheffer has indicated, does that preclude the school system from doing periodic updates, which they would have done to Ferry Farm, and that they do to all the other schools, as a normal situation?
No, wouldn't do that.
Life cycle maintenance, too.
Yeah, we, we could either use funded 3R projects and things like that. We could still identify additional funding, yes.
Cool. So it would not preclude you from doing?
Right, so that's more of a question for you guys, I think.
Biting or other situations.
Repeat that, Mr. Cohen, we had some.
It wouldn't preclude you from replacing dishwashers or lighting or something else that's a normal life cycle element?
No.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cohen, do you accept the amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. One, and I know this is in my district, and I know that I'm probably more seeped into the woods and the weeds on this than some others, but I remember very clearly, in our packet last June, them talking about additional elements. They may not have been called, called phases. One of the issues that has perpetually been going on for this school for the last decade is normal life scale items that should have been replaced were not, because of the quote-unquote "famous rebuild." And so what was very clear, at least to me, from when we met in June and subsequent meetings, was that most of what the other items are, are things that would be handled, as Mr. Fulmer said, as normal R and R items. So I'm not, that, I think Mr. Dudenheffer's friendly amendment is, is great, because it allows them to do what they were intending to do in the first place. I, I, you, the people on the board know that I have been very cautious, concerned, and curious about construction costs since, long before I began on this board. I was very pleased with the work that Mr. Fulmer and Dr. Kizner and our staff, Mr. Foley and everybody else on our staff, has done to answer the questions and get the materials. Several members on this board wanted the specific lists, and thankfully, we got them. They wanted data, we got them. And so I appreciate that greatly. I appreciate people's concerns about blooming projects that end up having other things thrown into it, and the issues of transparency. Boy, I don't think I've ever looked as good as I do right now. And I am very pleased that the system, when they saw that the costs were blooming, went back and stayed within and honored what this board has said. I think that the addition has the elevator aspect of it, which is needed for safety. I think the, the parts that they are coming up with are needed for safety. So I, I strongly believe we need to be doing this, and I hope my fellow board members will support it. Thank you.
Any other comments before we vote? I'll just take, oh, I'm sorry. Are we clear what the motion is?
The motion would be?
The way I understand it, the motion is to add in the 1.9 million, remove all phasing language from the resolution.
And change the 9,000 square feet.
To 7,650.
Correct.
Is that what I'm hearing? Is everybody good with that?
Second.
And I think we already have a second from Ms. Bomke. Any other discussion? Ms. Bomke.
I would just like to say, I think that the, this process has not been as any of us really anticipated it, and that is no fault of yours, Dr. Kizner. I want to make sure I state that for the record. You, it's very difficult to jump into a project very midstream or towards the end. But thank you for your leadership here at the end, and for being very candid with the board. So I just hope that the school board can work with us in the future in meeting the technical review committee deadlines, and some of this would have been flushed out had we gotten, gone through that process, and just look forward to an improved process for future construction projects along the way. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment? Ms. Shelton.
Dr. Kizner, I just wanted to let you know that when I walked in here today, I was absolutely not going to support this, and I really appreciate your leadership, as Ms. Bomke has mentioned, because you convinced me. So I'm going to vote for this. Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Mauer.
So this is an excellent lesson learned. Mr. Cavalier, a year ago, and it's been more than a year, he asked, what are we spending the 10.8 million on? And he asked, again, a couple of months later, and a couple of months after that, we have had TRC meetings where deadlines have not been met. As a matter of fact, we, we have had very little school input, school staff input, in the development of this year's CIP. And it's, it's extremely concerning, considering we just adopted last year with the school board a joint CIP process. And so if we're going to make decisions, you know, intelligent, fact-filled decisions, we need to have the information a lot sooner than, you know, a month before, or even two weeks before, we, we have to make these decisions. So we're not doing these things on the fly here, here at the, at the dais. And, and this information has been requested for going on a year, and, and that is extremely disappointing. I hope, as we develop this year's budget and this year's CIP, we can get the other information that has been requested by this board, because that is the only way we're going to be able to make intelligent, fact-based decisions. And instead of somebody promising it's only going to be 10.8, and we'll, we'll live within 10.8, and I have serious reservations about a claim of just 1.9 million, and, and then we're good. Because, because I heard that on Moncare Elementary School, I've heard it here in my time, and, and quite frankly, I'm concerned about a prioritization problem, and I'm also extremely concerned that there seems to be this kind of hostage situation going on, that if we don't approve the 1.9 million, and, and this was a vote or a request made by the school board, that if we didn't go with this 1.9 million, they were removing the basement out of the, out of the, the redistricting numbers. And that's, that's very concerning to me, because that's not a strong working relationship. That's, that's, that's more of a hostile relationship, and, and I hope we can get better on this. And I want to thank our staff for their time and their due diligence, and trying to get this information, so we can make an intelligent decision.
Any other comments? Well, since I have the last word, I too came here today intending to vote against this, mainly because of the phasing that we were not aware of. It has not been put in our CIP. It is a huge concern of mine that there's a $300 million CIP on the school board's side that this board is not aware of. Now, I know, we know what it is, you can go on the website or whatever and get it, but we have never been presented it, to my knowledge. And I appreciate Dr. Kizner taking out phases 2, 3, and 4, and because of that, I'll vote for this. The other concern I have, Dr. Kizner's not directing at you, because you haven't been here that long, the concern I have, if I had a student at Ferry Farm Elementary School, and I go on the website, or I look at this presentation, and it says, air quality concerns, my concern would be that the schools have not done an air quality test in 14 years. So the first thing that has to be done is somebody needs to do an air quality test in this school, to ensure the parents that it's safe for their children. That said, cast your votes. Tell the votes. The motion passes 6 to 1. Mr. Cohen did vote yes, it just hasn't shown up yet. Thank you, Dr. Kizner. And if you want to make that announcement before you go.
I'll put a good double check to one.
Okay. Item number 15, finance and budget and appropriate VPSA interest funds for a change order for AG Wright Middle School and Garrisonville Elementary School interior refinishes construction contract, resolution R-19-64. Ms. Light.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Andrea Light, Budget Director for Stafford County. Today, before you, you have proposed resolution 19-64, asking the board to consider the budget appropriation of VPSA interest for the Garrisonville Elementary School AG Wright interior refinishing work that has been done. When the VPSA borrows occur, it is our practice, our practice to net fund, meaning that we try to have the, the bond borrow proceeds and the interest equal the amount of the project. Due to the current interest rate environment, there are interest revenues in excess of the project costs that the school board has identified for uses for the AG Wright and Garrisonville Elementary School interior project. VPA, VPSA interest can be used for the projects listed in the cap, in the applications, or to repay debt service within the construction period plus one year. There are two VPSA borrows that have been identified, 2017A and 2017C. VPSA borrow 2017A was not associated with AG Wright Garrisonville Elementary. These funds can be used first to repay the county for the debt service, and in turn, relieve current revenue to be budget appropriated for the schools for AG Wright and Garrisonville. The superintendent's request was for specific need of these funds. In res, proposed resolution R-19-64, staff only recommends a portion of these. The accelerated construction period due to the shortened summer of 197, 763. Repair of a firewall of 18,550, and 50% of the requested contingency of $12,034. This is in conjunction with our new CIP policy, our CIP budget appropriation policy. Staff did not recommend sound attenuation panels or the reskining of the blackboard, as these seemed outside of the, the current AG Wright Garrisonville Elementary School project, as proposed in the CIP.
Thank you, Ms. Light. Any questions? I'll bring it back to the board. Ms. Mauer.
Well, since this is in the Rock Hill District, there were a number of concerns that I had about this project. We flushed a lot of those out in the finance and budget meeting. The recommendation of the committee was to go with the staff recommendation, which is approve resolution R-19-64, which would provide $228,997 for these projects.
I have a motion, I have a second by Mr. Dudenheffer. Is any discussion? Hearing none?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cohen.
Since I was not able to be at Fab, in my reading of the packet, it sounded like this additional money was to try to get this done because of the early start of the school year.
The majority of it, yes. 197,000 of it was due to the shortened summer, and there was some question, just for clarification for you, Mr. Cohen, there was some question on whether or not school was going to start in August, due to some filing of paperwork and legislation before the, before the legislature right now, it was confirmed that regardless of the way the vote goes, what the governor signs, school will be starting in the August 16 timeframe, and so we have a shortened summer, which requires the 197. The other recommendation was 18,500 for the repair of the firewall, and also replenishing 50% of the contingency at 12,000. There was originally $100,000 worth of contingency that they have utilized during the, during the, the acquisition phase of this particular project, and those were done through three change orders that, if you would like, they can come back in and highlight what those were, were utilized for.
Thank you, Ms. Mauer. My, my concern was that when they made the decision to start school earlier, they did not do a full analysis of the impact thereof. And this seems to look as though, yes, indeed, there are an additional almost quarter million dollars of expenses, that some of which is due because dollars of expenses, that some of which is due because of, they're making the decision. So I, I have great concerns about that.
Before we move forward, that start date, is it August twelfth or August sixteenth?
Mr. Chairman, I believe you stated August twelfth.
August twelfth, because we don't want thirty thousand students showing up four days late. Ms. Bomke.
Yeah, so I asked a question at budget and financing about the skimming of these blackboards. I, I need to understand, did the committee not approve that? What, what was the reason that they didn't approve it? And did they not have sufficient information? Because that is a teaching tool, the way I understand it. And I, I just am curious as to whether or not they had sufficient information or not.
Mr. Chairman, I, you, you made reference to the committee. Staff.
Right.
Looked forward to the recommendation without funding those. So I'm not sure about the committee you're referring to.
Okay, so staff.
Yeah. So staff, and, and I, I would say to you that I, I think we believe that they have adequate resources to take care of essential things like that, without it being a part of this action.
Okay, so it wasn't that they didn't feel it was important?
No, no. But, but again, they have flexibility on three R projects, and, and so for us to use interest from the proceeds that didn't go to the project, to do something that's not related, and wasn't planned in the first place, they have three R money to do those kinds of actions, and we didn't feel like it was appropriate, given what this topic was about.
Okay, I appreciate that. That helps me.
Ms. Mauer.
Ms. Bomke, it was also a procedural kind of thing, too, is, is the way these project funds are being utilized, they should be utilized within the scope of the particular project. And from a procedural perspective, those blackboards were outside the scope. And so to utilize those funds outside the scope is, is where, from a procedural perspective, kind of gave us pause. We talk about that frequently, when we budget and approve money, and then they use it for something else. We don't want to encourage that by doing the same thing on this board.
However, I believe that we did that over at HH Pool, or AG Wright?
Just because we do have lots.
I understand. I'm just informing you. Thank you.
Ms. Shelton.
I have a question for Ms. Light. Ms. Light, you, you indicated earlier that another alternative we had was to pay down our debt service with these funds. Do you know what the impact would be to our debt service if we applied these funds directly to it?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Shelton, we could repay ourselves for interest, repay the county for the interest that we have paid out on this project, which is, so far in 2017, A and B, I think it's about four hundred thousand. So this two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars that is available could repay, it's probably maybe a thirty thousand dollar annual impact on our debt service. It's round numbers.
Thank you. That's not as much as I actually hoped it would be. All right, thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
No.
I didn't hear. Tally the votes. The motion carries five to two. Oh, sorry. Motion carries six to one. Is that correct? Mr. Cohen voted no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item number sixteen, planning and zoning. Refer to the planning commission and ordinance to amend and reordain county code section twenty-eight dash twenty-four. Measurements to reduce encroachment into side yards for outside easement entrances and ingress, egress window wells, proposed resolution R nineteen dash forty-five. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an item that's been discussed in a number of meetings. The staff has recommended that the board consider adoption of resolution R nineteen dash forty-five, to send this ordinance on to the planning commission. Based on the discussion at the board meeting, at, at your last session, the board asked that we create a carve-out for the lots that had received approvals, where the lots and the houses have an encroachment problem. This would resolve that encroachment problem for those one hundred and seventy-nine instances. Staff notes that the approval date was June fourteenth of 2018, so any houses that had an encroachment problem prior to that date would be resolved with this ordinance amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Any questions for Mr. Harvey? Ms. Shelton.
Mr. Harvey, is the issue really about the encroachment? And so if we look at our peer communities, and I know we have discussions of what those are, is, do our peer communities consider this type of, the window wells, an encroachment?
Ms. Shelton, some do, some don't.
So why, why are we?
I'm sorry. Why are we considered an encroachment? And so, because it seems to me, and you would answer this, but it seems to me that if we didn't consider it an encroachment, that we would be in compliance with what other jurisdictions do, and it wouldn't cause us the problem that we're in right now.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Shelton, the way our ordinance is currently structured and its definition of what's permitted as far as encroachments, it speaks in terms of stairs as being one of those items. In this case, we have subterranean stairs that have encroached. Some jurisdictions do not consider any subterranean features like window wells and stairs to be an encroachment. So we'd have to change our other aspect of our code to alleviate that issue.
Is that a logical choice to make, instead of carving out this one hundred and twenty-nine different houses as having a different zoning?
Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Shelton, I, I guess that would be up to the board. There was discussion previously with this situation, that the board did not like the, these encroachments because of the small side yards to begin with. That created a situation where there was a limited pathway through that area, and the fire department had concerns.
One more, I'm sorry, sir. The, the reason I brought that up before is because I thought what was proposed to come to us is that we would actually narrow that distance, and accept that as a more narrow distance, not that it wasn't, was or was not an encroachment. Did I misunderstand that from the last time?
The amendment would effectively make the distance shorter, in other words, allow for more encroachment into the side yard.
Any other questions for Mr. Harvey? This is sending, Mr. Dudenheffer, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move for a resolution R nineteen dash forty-five, referring just to the planning commission.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Cohen, second. Any discussion? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion carries seven to zero. I did hear Mr. Cohen say yes. New business, Parks and Recreation and Community Facility discuss transfer of operation of county-run aquatics classes at the Jeff Rowse Swim and Sports Center to Eastern Sports Management. Mr. Morris.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mike Morris, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities. This item is a discussion item to consider transferring the operation of the county-run aquatic programs that are happening at Jeff Rowse Center now, to the operation of the Eastern Sports Management, who's our operator at the facility. As you may be aware, back in 2016, Jeff Rowse Sport and Swim Center opened up. At that time, the county operated in the transition from the closure of Woodlands Pool to the operation of Jeff Rowse Center, we operated some aquatics programs. During that transition, we then operated some programs at the Jeff Rowse Center to ease that transition. And for the last two and a half years, we've operated water aerobics and swim lessons at the Jeff Rowse Center. At this time, we've been discussing this for the last few months with the staff from the Jeff Rowse Center, Eastern Sports Management. And they brought forward the idea of transferring this, these programs to their operation. We concur, we believe it makes very good sense. Some things we've considered in this arrangement is that there's some logistical issues that have been a challenge for us, as far as registering and where you register for the program. You have to come to us to register for a program at their building. There's also been some logistical questions about different programs that we can't answer that relate to their, their operation. And so, there's also some financial reasons. We, we would save, cost savings somewhere between thirty and fifty thousand dollars if we were to do this. So we have, as part of this, asked that the Eastern Sports Management honor the current times, dates, costs, so that there be no impact to any of the participants. And so with that, we're recommending that we move forward with this. It does not require a board action, but we did want to make you aware of it, and give the opportunity to the public to let us know if there were any outstanding issues there that, that may have been concerned. And so with that, this did go to the Parks and Recreation Commission in December, and received a seven oh vote in favor, and then it was also on the CEDC committee two weeks ago. So I'll be glad to answer any questions, if you have any.
Ms. Mauer.
Yeah, just a quick question. I, I appreciate you answering the question that I had initially, which is, they're going to honor the dates, the times, the programs, and, and the cost. But how, how is this done? And pardon my ignorance on, on the process with the swim center, but if they decide to raise prices, how is their process different from our process? I, I understand that in year one, great, but, but I'm looking at year three, you know, two through five.
Correct. And any fees that would be changed in our program would have to come from the board and receive approval. They evaluate their fees as they, as, you know, periodically.
Right.
Whether that's annually, or, or more than annually, would be up to them, how often they evaluate their fees. I do not believe they've had many fee changes since their original operation opened about two and a half years ago, but I'd be glad to have them answer that for you, if you like.
Yeah, is it possible that we could still have, you know, and I'm not saying any fee adjustments, but let's say fee adjustments above ten percent year over year, or some sort of fee adjustments come before the board? Is that possible as part of this arrangement, considering they're utilizing county-owned facilities?
Their lease agreement says that they will have that autonomy.
To set their fees how they see fit?
Yes, ma'am.
Hmm, I'm not certain I'm comfortable with that, especially if we're handing another program over to them. That, that would theoretically compete. Okay, I'm going to have to think about that.
Mr. Chairman? Anyone else?
Mr. Cohen has a question.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Morris, a question, I saw in the packet where certain types of employees will be carried over into the new situation. However, there are other employees, which tend to be high school students, who are looking at a position, a point right now where they're going to become unemployed because of this. So that is grave concern, that this project isn't going to be taking care of everybody that is working. So if you could look into that aspect, that would be equitable.
Yes, I believe they intend, as many as wish, they will hire as many, they want to keep the continuity, so they do intend to hire as many of those who wish to stay on with them during this program, the instructors, that is, the part-time instructors.
Yeah, if you'll check with that personally, because some of them have been told individually that their position is no longer going to be needed, so they are gone. And so that, that causes great consternation.
Any other questions? Mr. Cavalier.
Yeah, I think everyone needs to recognize that there's a finite number of these people who are certified in swim instruction, in lifeguarding, in all, all things water aerobics, and things like that, that, that are done at this facility. And so I don't think there's going to be a lot of people unemployed because of this move. They just won't be employed by the county. I think that, that, that's something we don't need to worry about. I also think that the staff at the Jeff Rowse Center can more adequately program this, these swim lessons, in conjunction with all the other activities they have that are going on in the water there. It's still a finite resource that we have. It's much better than what we had at Woodlands, certainly, but this, it's because we've got two pools there, plus the therapy pool. So it, it will benefit everyone, I think, in this. Not only, it's a win-win, because it actually allows the, the general membership at the Jeff Rowse Center to be able to have more lanes accommodating their needs, too, at certain times, than the disconnects that happen sometime with coordinating between the county staff times and the Rowse Center times. And so this, this way, everything's managed from a single point. And I think Ms. Locher, back here in the back, I think can attest to that. I, I see her out there all the time, and she does an excellent job, and there are very few complaints from, from anyone out there. So I, I think this is nothing but a, a good idea.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Morris. We have no action from the board required, correct?
Thank you.
Item number eighteen, Public Works, discuss modification to the terms for funding the Lake Carroll Service District dam renovations, proposed resolution R nineteen dash five nine. Mr. Dayton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Keith Dayton, I'm a project manager for the Lake Carroll Kennedy Dam renovations. The Lake Carroll is a private community. They have nineteen properties that are within this Lake Owners Association, as Mr. Waddell mentioned previously. It is within the Argyle Heights subdivision, but it's a, a rather confined entity within that subdivision. The lake is formed by the Kennedy Dam, and that's a private dam, currently out of compliance with state dam safety regulations. The community has been working for a number of years, trying to get this dam back into compliance and safely, within the regulations established by the state. The initial cost estimates, or preliminary cost estimates, that were produced for this renovation work that was necessary, were estimated at around five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And then the board in 2017 passed the ordinance O seventeen forty-one that established the Lake Carroll Service District, and then shortly thereafter approved funding in the amount of five hundred and fifty thousand for these renovations. Well, the survey and engineering and the final design have advanced, are now completed. And there was additional information that was learned as a result of this effort, and the current cost estimate is now seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. So it's significantly more, and it's due mainly to the additional survey and study that was done, that determined that the area that must be protected from erosion in the event of an over-topping event, which is what this dam must be able to pass, was much larger than originally calculated for the early estimates. So this is an area that, additional area that must be covered by this hydroturf product to protect the downstream slope of the dam from erosion and failure. So we did go and inform the Lake Owners Association about these facts and the increased costs, and after a couple of meetings, they have expressed an interest, a desire, to move forward and fund the additional cost. They have requested that the board be asked to, to consider the additional funding necessary to, to, to bridge that gap in funding. But they're also asking for the board to consider extending the repayment period from the initial twenty years to as much as thirty years, if possible. That would help mitigate what will be a twelve cent increase in the tax rate, if it goes through with the added cost at a twenty-year interval. The, the board has heard, as it was in the background report, that, that other initiatives adopted to help fund some other communities did have an interest factor associated with that. I would just advise the board that because this community is so small, the tax rate is so, so low, and the property owners involved are so few, that every penny in interest for this loan would add about a nickel to the tax rate. So if the board did consent to fund the additional amount for the thirty-year period, the property owners would go in with an assessment of about twenty-seven cents to go ahead and fund that. This is a new business item. There's no action necessary, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that board members may have.
Any questions for Mr. Dayton?
I have a question, but I did have a comment.
Let me ask a question first. Is this time-sensitive, Mr. Dayton?
No, it's not. No, sir.
Okay. Any comments? Ms. Mauer.
I have one. And so I, I went through this in Lake Arrowhead, and getting the dam fixed, and the state regulations, and I hope, Keith, you can, you can do all you can to kind of get DCR to, to give them as much grace as humanly possible. But I do commend all of you for taking the bull by the horns and being willing to fund this yourself. I, I know it's not easy, and it's unfortunate that it's gone this long, and this is the position that we're position that we're in, but I really do commend you. Not an easy decision, and with 600 lot owners in Lake Arrowhead, let me tell you, that was quite the row.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cohen.
Yes, Mr. Dayton, I just wanted to thank you greatly and thank the residents for all their hard work. I don't know that it's, Mr. Dayton is one to toot his own horn, but he has gone back and forth with the Commonwealth on this many times and has done a terrific job in looking out for the residents. And the residents in that area, which is, Ms. Mauer says she has a large number, this is a small number, have worked very diligently and have been getting usually 100% support for what they need to do to try to make this happen. So I just applaud you, Mr. Dayton, and appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Okay, no action required by the board?
No, sir.
Just for the residents that are here, this is new business. Our bylaws do not allow us to vote on it unless it's time-sensitive. This will be on the March 5th agenda in the afternoon session as unfinished business. Thank you, Mr. Dayton. Last item of the afternoon, number 19, Public Works Transportation endorsed submission of request forms for county projects for federal congestion mitigation and air quality to CMAC and Regional Surface Transportation Program funding proposed resolution R-19-60. It's your nickel, Jason.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jason Towery, Director of Public Works, here to discuss the CMAC and, proposed CMAC and RSTP training, or transportation funding. Just some brief background on CMAC and RSTP. These are federal dollars that are administered through FAMPO. And each year, when these funds are allocated on a fiscal year basis, FAMPO also works with the CTB and VDOT to determine how these funds are allocated. CMAC specifically is really used to address issues of traffic congestion, other air quality issues, things of that nature. RSTP funds are a little bit less restricted, can be used or associated with safety improvements on roadways, mass transit, and impact studies. So this funding from the federal government does have some restrictions in terms of the type of use, or at least the types of products that we typically, or types of projects that we would typically put forward as proposed. FAMPO did make a call for the projects here just a few weeks ago and is asking for them to be submitted by February 26th. The new projects will be screened, scored, and ranked accordingly. And then just, in general, the federal funding is typically limited to about $10 million. And this funding that we're looking at is in the out years, in this case specifically, FY '26. So we discussed this at the Infrastructure Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the board, the Infrastructure Committee, rather, requested that staff go back and take a closer look in conjunction with the new comprehensive road list and after the study had been done and come back. After doing that, we did come up with a list of three recommended projects. Just for clarification, there are existing projects currently on the current FAMPO CMAC/RSTP list, number two there, actually the Enon Road intersection improvements there at Route One. This is a continuation of that ongoing funding request. We have approximately, I believe it's approximately about $6 million so far in existing funding, good portion of which is CMAC and RSTP dedicated towards the Enon Road projects. This is another request for continued funding on that project. More specifically, items one and three are new proposed projects that we're putting in front of FAMPO this year. The first one is the Garrisonville Road Star Study, and you may recognize this from Mr. Dayton's comprehensive road list. This, I'll talk about it more here in a second, but this is specifically, again, for the section there around 95 and then out to Onville Road. And then the second is at US Route One in Ley Hill specifically, there's a lot of congestion issues along Route One having to do with right-of-way access through there. So the Garrisonville Stars Study, STARS again stands for Strategically Targeted and Affordable Roadway Solutions. It does try to better target funds towards various intersection improvements, perhaps timing signal improvements, things of that nature that can help to address issues in a more cost-effective manner. This one, again, specifically looks at the area of route between, on Garrisonville Road between Route One and Onville Road. The total cost of the study would be about $200,000. And what we've found on these is that FAMPO has been successful at leveraging about $75,000 towards the cost of these studies and is able to go ahead and take care of that total cost. They've done this in a couple of other places, been very successful. And typically, once a STAR study is done, VDOT and others, in terms of being able to move forward with potential projects, it really lends a lot of credibility to projects. Specifically, in this case, we're hopeful that a STAR study would perhaps open up the opportunity to do some smaller intersection improvements in that area to help improve against some of the congestion that we're experiencing. Again, the Route One Enon Road project, the latest VDOT estimate had approximately $10.1 million, although I will note that our staff has recently been tracking some increases there in those estimates, in particular because of the right-of-way acquisition costs that we've seen going up. As the board knows, this was one of the projects that was unsuccessful with Smart Scale. And one of the concerns that staff has is that if this project were to be pushed out too far, that construction costs could continue to escalate. So we've discussed the possibility of splitting this project at some point into two phases. We have not made that decision yet. Obviously, that would be a board decision for future consideration, but we're still working through that. The objective there would really be to try to control the timing and costs and scope of the project. We've also looked at perhaps some shoulder hardening as a potential to reduce some of the costs of that project at some point. Right now, there's approximately a $4.5 million need. That's the, that's the delta that Smart Scale left us with. So this would request an additional $1 million in FY '26. And I added down there at the bottom, we have had some good discussions with FAMPO over the last couple of weeks about the potential for some other funds being available earlier. We don't know that for sure yet, but we've received some positive feedback that perhaps, even though this $1 million is in FY '26, perhaps there might be some opportunity to adjust and receive some funds earlier. So we'll keep an eye on that. And then the last project here is Ley Hill and Route One. Again, this is another project off the comprehensive road study list. The, the study actually discusses from the intersection of Route One all the way back to Perimeter House. So this project, again, would have two phases. This first primary phase would be up to the intersection with Forbes Street with a heavy focus there on Route One to try and provide better access management. The projected cost for that is $5.5 million. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. This is a time-sensitive item, as FAMPO has requested to have the projects in for consideration by February 26th.
Any questions for Mr. Towery? Ms. Mauer.
Yeah, just, and it's not necessarily for Mr. Towery, but it was for Ms. Shelton. You had, there was an interesting idea about the multimodal path that you presented at our retreat. Are you intending that for next year in adding that to the process?
No, actually, that STAR study has already been approved, and it's going on. The launch was last week.
Okay.
And this STAR study will also include multimodal aspects of it.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I believe we need a motion to waive our bylaws to declare this time-sensitive. So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Cast your votes.
Yes.
Tally the votes. Motion carries seven to zero. Back to the main motion.
Move for approval.
Ms. Bumpkin has moved for approval.
Second.
I've got about four different seconds, so.
Mr. Cohen.
I'll take Mr. Cohen. Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your votes. Tally the vote.
Please.
Did Mr. Cohen vote yes?
Yes.
Seven to nothing. Thank you, Mr. Towery. That concludes our afternoon session. We will reconvene at 7:00 PM.
That's funny when they show us empty seats.
Oh, I know. Can we, can we draw a face and put it on?
Mr. Dudenheffer will lead us in prayer, and I'll lead you in the pledge. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come to you. Come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect the students, staff, faculty, and members of our community. In these things, we pray, Lord, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Our prayers are to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to do public presentations. I have one speaker card. I would ask that when you come to the podium that you give your name and address. Once the green light comes on, you'll have three minutes to speak on any subject you'd like. When the yellow light comes on, you have about a minute, and when the red light comes on, it's time to wrap it up. So with that said, my only speaker card is Fran Larkins. Larkin.
Hi, good evening. My name is Fran Larkins. I live at 40 Battery Point Drive in South Stafford. Our address is Fredericksburg. And I am also here with Jackie Arthur, who's sitting in the audience. We are both residents of Stafford, and we are also very, we are also volunteers with One Virginia 2021. And we are here tonight to ask you to support legislation which would end gerrymandering in Virginia. Every 10 years after the US Census, the party empowering Virginia in the Virginia State Legislature redraws its district lines. This is done to protect the incumbent. It's bipartisan, both Democrats and Republicans gerrymander. This is not in the best interest of Virginia residents they are representing. And Virginia is one of the most gerrymandered states in the United States. Stafford County is represented in the Virginia General Assembly by three delegates and three senators. In the House of Delegates, we have House District Two with Jennifer Carol Foy, House District 28 with Bob Thomas, and House District 88 of Mark Cole. Each one of them represent at least two counties, but Mark Cole represents four jurisdictions: Spotsylvania, Stafford, Fredericksburg City, and Rock Hill. In the Virginia Senate, we have three senators, Senate District 28 with Senator Richard Stewart, Senate District 27 with Senator Jill Vogel, and Senate District 38 with Senator Scott Surville. Senator Jill Vogel represents seven counties, and of that, Stafford represents only 4.9% of her area. And Senator Scott Surville represents two others, with Stafford County making up only 6.47% of his district. So that's about the amount of attention you can probably give Stafford County. In Stafford County, there are many situations where different delegates represent neighbors on either side of a road. As volunteers for One Virginia 2021, we found Stafford citizens are very confused as to who their legislators are, or they don't even know who they are. The confusion is understandable. I'm sure it must be very difficult for you all as well to discuss the needs of our county with legislators when you are dealing with so many representatives. 70% of Virginia support creating an independent redistricting commission. Right now, there is bipartisan support in Virginia's General Assembly for establishment of an independent redistricting commission. This week, we've got two different bills which have passed the Senate and House, and conferees are being chosen right now to work out the difference between these bills. In order to be a truly independent redistricting commission, this bill has got to have citizen involvement, checks and balances to make sure one party cannot outnumber another, provisions requiring full transparency of all meetings and data, and also specific language prohibiting political gerrymandering. It should read, "No district shall be drawn with the intent to favor or disfavor any party or individual." If these can't be in there, it's not going to be a very good bill, and we're not going very far. We're only asking each of you to individually in the public here tonight to personally contact your own state delegates and senators tomorrow. It's got to be, it's being done this week, to ask their support. And Virginia could certainly use some good news right now.
Ms. Larkin, I would ask you to wrap up your comments.
Okay, I'd be happy to do that. The very best news would be that our General Assembly took the first step to create an independent redistricting commission and end gerrymandering. Virginia's Patrick Henry was the very first in our country to gerrymander. Let the country know that Virginia is doing the right thing and ending it. Thank you for your support, any support you can give us. But it's got to be tomorrow, Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only speaker card I had. Is anyone on my right wish to address the board? Here again, you can speak for three minutes on any subject. Anyone on my left?
Paul Waldowski, Eight Picket Lane. I'm in the gerrymandered Rock Hill District. I also own property in the gerrymandered Griffiths Whitewater District. Welcome to Stafford County. This afternoon, the bylaws were passed. Now I feel welcome. I mean, I have passion too, so much passion, sometimes I get kicked off the stage because I don't stay on topic. But today, don't worry, I wrote it down for the public hearing. Now, there was a comment made in this afternoon session about potholes. Citizens, please go to VDOT website. As I was leaving today, I went down Austin Ridge. The potholes were all fixed up to DeWitt and Tavern because I really stress that's where one of our middle schools are. Simply amazing. Also this afternoon, I heard about Lake Carroll, and I don't know what happened with it, but Lady Justice wears a blindfold. And if you're favoring these 18 members or 15 properties, I own one of 66 properties. I'm going to represent a Marine who got literally almost bankrupt. He's on active duty, who wound up buying property there in 2005. I can't go to the circuit court anymore. I was there 10 years. The judges all know me. But they don't know I can sponsor someone. Ha, ha, ha. So we just want fairness. We want transparency, just like gerrymandering. That's why we don't want no Democrats or Republicans on that independent study. For the, for the gerrymandering ladies in the audience, remember, brain ends with in, things got in in the middle, and minds got in in it. And independent begins with in. Republican has I see, and I see nothing done. And Democrat has rat in it. All right. The real reason I came here is to inform citizens on what an anchor property is. If you saw last week about Amazon, one of my favorite cities, New York, they were in Long Island. Golly, they're going to bring jobs, but we have all these socialists in this country, you know, who shouldn't even be in the country, probably got in here illegally. But we'll build a wall, and we'll take care of that. Remember, when you build anchor property in any redevelopment, especially a quiet town center, Wegmans is a 21st century grocery store. Harris Teeter is not a 21st century store. I saw Walmart do very well today on the stock as we're approaching 26K on the Dow. But what do I know? I'm just smarter than a fifth grader. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Waldowski. Anyone else in the chamber like to address the board? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board. We'll start our public hearings. Item number 20, Planning and Zoning, amend and reordain County Code Section 28-359, calculation of development rights, and Section 28-364, development approval procedures regarding transfer of development rights. Proposed ordinance 01916. Ms. Baker.
Good evening. Yes, I'm Kathy Baker with the Department of Planning and Zoning to talk about the transfer of development rights. As soon as I can make sure the slides are transferring. So we actually have two different amendments here. One is regarding the calculation of development rights, clarifying that eligible lots within our sending areas are entitled to transfer at least one development right. The second one is regarding the timing of landing transfer of development. one is regarding the timing of landing transfer of development rights from the preliminary plan to the final plat stage within our receiving area. Just a little bit of background, the TDR program, as you recall, was established in 2015. We have had 13 applications for determination of rights in the last year and a half. We have, out of the number of applications, we've had 501 total rights with about 50 that have actually been severed. So we've had a citizen request for amendments to the ordinance that are going to help facilitate the process. As you recall, the board did discuss this back in August and referred it to the planning commission. So I'll note that the amendments may be considered by the board as two separate issues. So first, under our current ordinance, development right applications are required to have engineered calculations to determine those rights, and that includes subtracting the hydro soils and steep slopes, slopes that are greater than 25 percent from a property, to determine the number of development rights that can be transferred. And questions have come up regarding the guarantee of one development right for an existing lot, and this amendment would clarify that. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. The Second Amendment deals with the timing, as I said. Right now, the ordinance requires you to affix the development rights in the receiving area at the time of your preliminary subdivision plan. So this is a problem for properties that submit, or property owners that submit applications for the landing, affixing the development rights within the receiving area. So with the contractual owner, they would have to purchase those rights before a preliminary plan is approved, and there's no guarantee that that plan is approved. So this would allow them to wait until the final plat stage in order to do that. And just to remind you, the sending areas that you'll see highlighted in the blue boundary, it's east of the CSX tracks and between Aquia Creek and Potomac Creek, and then the receiving areas in the courthouse vicinity east of I-95. This actually shows the parcels within these sending areas that are eligible for transfer, and it's a little bit difficult to see, but really the blue hatched areas. The properties in the sending areas are zoned A1 and A2, and you must have two acres if you are designated in the park area, which is basically the green area, the bright green area. Otherwise, you have to have a minimum of 20 acres, either as an individual parcel or combined contiguous parcels under the same ownership. In the receiving areas, the outline you'll see here, the gray properties are not eligible for parcels to receive transferred development rights, but the others that are zoned, the A1, R1, B3, and UD are eligible. So I'll note, during the planning commission discussions, there was concern regarding the number of development rights that would be permitted within the Crowsnest Harbor subdivision because there are considerable slopes throughout that subdivision. This map does show the 501 parcels or properties that have received determinations. Again, 50 of them have been severed, and that's the property that you see in pink to the far right of your screen. You'll see the pink parcels that are subject to the applications that have been approved. The white parcels that you see remaining, there's 61 parcels that have not been subject to any application. Again, the planning commission was concerned about the remaining parcels and the potential for those development rights, but I'll note that only 10 of those parcels may contain less than just an acre of usable area. The, if they weren't going to become part of the TDR program, and not specifically in Crowsnest Harbor, but if a lot is eligible to build a home, the steep slopes and hydro soils are not going to limit someone from constructing a home on that. So just wanted to make that clarification. So as I noted, the staff did receive a quest, a request to consider these separately. The board can take them up together in the ordinance, or they can take them up separately. We did have an additional request during the process through the planning commission that, for some language changes, not to change the intent of the ordinance, but just some language, but that was not considered by the planning commission, so that's not being presented tonight. The planning commission voted. They did not support the First Amendment regarding the calculation determination, but they did support the Second Amendment regarding the timing. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Ms. Baker? Ms. Mauer.
So the planning commission had considerable discussion about this, and from what I understand, it was the calculation. What is the process for determining a development right?
So an applicant will submit, we actually have four separate steps in the process.
Okay.
The very first one is submitting a request for determination. They have to be engineered. They have to present the total acreage, the lots, the, show us the hydro soils and the slopes on that application on a plan. They make those calculations and show us what starting acreage is and what your total final development rights are based on those calculations. So you can submit a single lot. You can submit, as I said, combined lots if they're under same ownership. If it's under the same ownership and you're looking at several lots, you take the cumulative number of...
And you subtract out the steep slopes and you, and make sure that there's what enough, from the hydraulic soils, you're looking for perk sites? Is that what?
Basically, the perk sites equate to where you don't have hydro soils.
Okay. And so in that process, with the ones, it looks like we're guaranteeing one development right regardless of whether or not it's a developable lot. Am I interpreting this correctly?
Basically, but again, we're not, by doing these calculations, we're not saying it is a developable lot or not a developable lot. If you can get a perk site on a property, on a one acre, a two acre, a 10 acre lot, then you can build a house if it's meeting all of the other requirements. But for the purpose of just coming up with the calculations for the development right, if you have a lot and it's showing that you have less than one acre of the developable land, then you're, it's been somewhat interpreted that you aren't guaranteed that development right. Did you follow that?
No. So it has been, it has been asked on whether or not we are issuing development rights on unbuildable land. Let me just be frank. And, and so is that how this ordinance is written, that everybody is guaranteed one development right regardless of whether or not the land is developable?
That's how staff is interpreting it. And again, just because there are hydro soils and steep slopes on a lot does not render it unbuildable.
Oh.
If you have property and you're required to have a drain field, septic and drain field on it, if you have a one acre lot and you do all of your soils test, and you can determine that there is room on that lot to have a drain field and everything else that's required, you meet setbacks and everything else to build a house, you could build a house on a lot.
Okay, but we are not ensuring that these are developable lots before granting them a development right.
The ordinance is not requiring that you submit all of that. We're just basically really showing that you've got hydro soils, here's how you determine your calculations.
Okay.
There's no, you're not required to go out and do the soils testing, or do perk sites, or anything else to make the determination on these TDRs.
Okay.
Ms. Bomke.
Okay, so, but we are, in the final analysis, telling them whether or not they are getting a development right or not, correct?
What they're submitting to us shows the calculations that their engineer has, has prepared and submitted with the application. We are basically confirming that.
Okay. So why was the planning commission so adamantly against this?
I mean, it's my understanding that there was discussion back when the ordinance was created, whether the intent was to allow that confirmation of one development right if, on your eligible lots. So there's no real, I mean, it may have been the intent, it may not have. I think some people believe that it may have been, but regardless, we're looking at how the ordinance has been constructed and how it's being interpreted.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Michelle.
Ms. Baker, didn't we, wasn't part of the reason why we're doing this particular thing was to streamline the process, right?
Basically, yes.
And then, and I'm going to go back to the people that I've talked to at Crowsnest. And some of these people are older people, and I'm older, so don't go there, but some of these people are older people. They've, they've owned this land for like 40 years. And so the way I'm mentioning it is because the particular people that I'm thinking of really don't have a lot of money. From what I understand, that it's about $1,500 to do an application for a TDR. Half of it is the engineering study. Is that right?
The cost of the application is $200.
Right.
Yeah, I've heard the cost for engineering on the single lots is probably about $1,000 to $1,200.
Yeah, so that, so I understood that that was one of the reasons they didn't want to apply for a TDR, and so we end up with this patchwork that we currently have. And by streamlining the process and being able to move it through, knowing all the other factors are true, that that would be the benefit to Stafford County. That would allow them to release more, release is a different word, but I'm sure that's the wrong word, but that would allow the individuals in the Crowsnest area to be able to identify their lot as a developable lot, or not a developable lot, but as a transferable lot, and then without having to pay that $1,500. Is that right?
I think generally what you're saying is what we have been hearing.
Yeah, I know I'm saying it wrong. Yeah, okay.
I can't specifically answer that, but...
All right, so my apologies. But I just wanted to bring that perspective to the board. It's one of the reasons why I'm supportive of it is because I have constituents that are truly just trying to avoid that $1,500, and it looked like it was a really good process improvement without very much downside to us. So I'm looking for the downside, and I'm not seeing it yet. What's the downside, Kathy?
Does anyone else on this side have a question? Jack? Or anybody over here? Ms. Mauer?
So we're, the whole purpose of transferring development rights is to encourage people who are, who have buildable land, land that they could put houses on, and to not put them out in the outskirts where it's hard to provide services, and encourage them to bring them inside of our urban service area. Fantastic. Understand the concept, think it's great. But if I'm hearing you correctly, we are taking land that may not be buildable, may not be able to put houses on it, and because of some calculations that we're doing in this streamlined fashion, we're allowing them to put houses inside the urban service area, i.e. transfer that development right, when they couldn't have done it out in this, this other area because there's no proof that they could have plotted those actual homes or built those homes due to soils, septic, all of that. Is that what I'm understanding?
Let me just clarify one thing that may not have come out, but we're, we're looking at lots that are less than five acres to guarantee one lot. And right now, I think, yes, you summarized it, more or less, but it's, we are limiting it to lots that are under five acres and, you know, I'm not a proponent for anything. I'm just letting you all know that.
Okay.
Here's what the request is, and, and it would facilitate the process.
So the downside is, is we could be allowing more homes where no, in a new area, where no homes were able to be built in an old area. That's, I mean, that's what I'm concerned about.
I think generally, in looking at these lots, and we have looked at the ones in Crowsnest Harbor, just, in general, you're not going to say this one's completely underwater and can't be built upon. Again, I think until anybody goes out to their property and does the soils test and other determinations, they're not going to know. So we really don't know. We did our estimations back when we developed the program on which lots were eligible for sending. We did remove certain properties that, that did not meet the eligibility criteria, and that's the map that I showed you. You can get an idea of where those properties are.
Any other questions? Mr. Cohen, I didn't, is Mr. Cohen on the phone with us?
No, thank you.
For those of you who don't know what we're doing, Mr. Cohen, who represents George Washington District, has a family medical emergency, and he is home, and he's allowed to call in by telephone to vote. So he did it this afternoon, and during and again this evening. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Dudenheffer.
Wasn't here when they, they did this transfer of development rights, but man, this Crowsnest thing has been hanging like a cloud, a storm cloud over us for years. But I can't come, I can't understand why we would want to give a development right to somebody who can't build on their lot anyway, so move it somewhere else. It, the logic behind it doesn't make any sense to me. And I don't understand what the reason is that we're even contemplating that.
Because it was a request, and we're processing it through as a request.
So the board requested you, for the planning commission and you guys to work on a way to deal with these small little lots scattered through Crowsnest Harbor. But I mean, it, it's still, we, we end up with a house being built somewhere that we have to support based on trying to make someone whole who couldn't build on their lot anyway. I mean, and...
Well, if you're talking Crowsnest Harbor, I'm going to defer to our county attorney to answer any questions on that because I'm not, you know, don't know all the details of...
Well, I mean, the whole purpose of this is Crowsnest Harbor, right? I mean, let's face it, we're talking about trying to find a way to, to get the owner, to get ownership or get conservation easement on a big part of that property out there, and they've been nipping at the margins for years on how we are going to do that. It just doesn't seem, you know, it's one thing to, somebody has a lot, they can build five homes on it, you give them five develop, transferable lots. But if you have a lot where nobody, they can't build anyway, I don't understand what, why that benefits the county, and no one has explained that to me.
I mean, I guess my only response to that is we've already done the determination on the majority of Crowsnest Harbor.
So how many lots?
We only have...
Based, based on this, how many lots, or how many additional buildable lots do we end up with based on your analysis that we wouldn't have had otherwise?
Potentially, and it hasn't been confirmed, potentially 10 out of the 353 lots.
So we're only adding 10 lots, 10 buildable lots. Like a planning commission member told me, said it was closer to 30, but I guess in the big picture, that's not as, as many. I just have a little difficulty just getting my arms around this one, so, thank you.
Any other questions? Just one final. What is this property zone, Crowsnest Harbor property? What is that? What's the zoning there?
A2 is Crowsnest, minimum one acre lots.
Okay. No further questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Baker. This time, I'm going to open the public hearing. You are allowed, as with earlier, you're allowed three minutes. Please come forward, state your name and address. The green light will come on. When the yellow light comes on, you have about a minute, and when the red light comes on, we ask you to wrap up your comments. Please make sure that your words, or your speech, or your talk is directed at this issue. Anyone on my right like to address the board on this? Anyone on my left?
Paul Wodowsky, Eight Picket Lane. Transferable development rights is a way of controlling land use to complement zoning and strategic planning for more effective urban growth management and land conservation like Central Park, not Crowsnest, where you have no developed, developable land. I don't care if you have 10. That's 10 too many. The problem at hand in Stafford County, which has not changed in the 29 years I lived here, it's still a rural bedroom community with HOAs, with now the medium income on or about 100K versus an urban one that the Richmond bureaucrats tried to force through the Commonwealth as UDAs under Dillon's rule. TDR is a creative, innovative, and experimental form of development control. It offers landowners financial incentives and bonuses for the conservation and maintenance of the environmental heritage or agricultural values of their land. That's why it's A2. That's why it's A two. These land-based development rights can, in some jurisdictions, be used, unused, transferred, or sold by the owner of a parcel. Developers can purchase the development rights of certain properties that is not developable within a designated sending district and transfer their rights to another receiving district to increase the density of their new development, and guess what? They're gonna get water and sewer. Golly. Receiving districts are generally areas more suited for high-density developments that bring crime to rural areas that don't exist today. The sending districts are areas with environmental heritage or the agricultural values that the county wishes to preserve. And yes, I do wanna preserve all the green area, but I don't wanna give some bad developer who made a bad property investment and now wants to get favoritism over someone else. It's just not fair. The planning commission brings up the calculation for a reason. When you established the TDR in 2015, it was a bad law, it's still a bad law, it deals with Central Park, it doesn't deal with Crowsnest.
Thank you, Mr. Wodowski. Anyone else in the chamber would like to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board and close the public hearing. On the asked of county attorney, we've got one proposed ordinance, but we are doing two votes, correct?
Mr. Chairman, that would be up to the prerogative of the board and the person making the motion.
Okay. So this is Ms. Shelton's district. And I'll turn to you.
Are we going to talk about the other portion of it?
I'm sorry, are we... Shouldn't we be talking about the other portion of the ordinance?
Ms. Baker...
The complete ordinance is in front of the board, both sections are described in Ms. Baker's presentation.
Both sections, I thought, weren't it? You presented both sections, correct, that's what I thought.
Okay, my apology, I...
It's okay.
Would've asked some other questions, so...
Now, the way I understand...
That's okay.
Yeah, you can ask more questions, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. I, I'm sorry, Ms. Baker. One of the things I wanted to ask, and I didn't see this in here, if I had, because they're less than five acres, and I don't remember all of the parcels, but you do, I'm sure, is that if I had a parcel that was greater than, you know, like, three acres, if I had something that was three acres, would I get three development rights? If it was all one continuous piece?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
You're still gonna have, if you have a larger parcel, you still have to do the calculations if you desire to have more than one development right determined.
Oh, so if I didn't wanna go through the hassle, I just, I would, I would give it up just for one? Do I get one, or do I get three?
If, I mean, if you have a lot that you think you may get three development rights, then yes, you would have it engineered, you would have it submitted, the calculations would show whether you could get a full three development rights on that. But this is strictly just to permit, to guarantee one development on those parcels.
Okay, I see, okay, thank you.
Ms. Mauer?
So I'm looking at how the development rights were calculated, and in maybe the A two zoning, how many, how many acres per lot in A two, is it, is it a one acre?
One acre minimum.
One acre. So we just, we took out the unusable acreage, whatever was, was left regardless of whether or not it was developable, like, actually developable, we gave them one lot, according to this table that I'm seeing back here, that we had, we removed unusable acreage, and then whatever was left, we divided by one, and that was the number of development rights.
On the existing applications?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from Ms. Baker? Okay, thank you. Ms. Shelton?
All right, I'd like to propose the approval of ordinance zero one nine dash one six for the TDR.
Are you including both sections?
I'm including both sections, that's correct.
Okay, I have a motion to include both sections in oh nineteen dash sixteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Cavalier. Any discussion? No discuss, hearing none? Cast your votes.
No.
Tally the vote.
Mr. Cohen voted no.
Mr. Cohen voted no. The motion fails five to two. I'm gonna need some help from the county attorney. We can come back on the second part of that, correct? Another motion?
Well, actually, there was both, both parts of that in front of the board. If there was a desire to bifurcate that, it should be done via amendment.
Okay. Would you wanna try to, can we do an amendment to the...
So to, it would technically be like a reconsideration, and it would need to be someone on the prevailing side to reconsider, to bifurcate what was just part of the...
So that we can separate them and then vote, okay. Having, having voted on the prevailing side, I request that the, that the vote be taken again.
And bifurcated. And we separate the two.
And, well, right, but once the vote's out, then we have two on the table, and we can deal with them. It doesn't have to be part of my motion.
Correct, you have to, it's just a motion is to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
I have a motion to reconsider. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I have three seconds. I think Mr. Cavalier was first. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote.
Yes.
Tally the vote. Motion passes six to one. Back to Mrs. Shelton. Ms. Shelton?
Yes, I'd like to...
I think, I'm gonna make sure, make sure we're clear with the county attorney. This motion will be for the same ordinance, but be for section two eight point three six four, is that correct?
If the board would like to take them up, and, if the board would like to take them up in part, then yes, it would be, the first consideration would be section twenty-eight dash three sixty-four subsection A.
Okay. And that covers...
That's the approval procedures.
Yes, this would be the part that allows them to move forward with the transfer of development rights on the preliminary plan, and then they have to actually be affixed to the receiving property at the time of final plot.
Okay. And that's the one that the planning commission recommended?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Shelton, I'm sorry for all this confusion, folks.
That's okay. Before I do, one of the things that, if, I don't think we've discussed into the public what the difference between those two are, and so, Ms. Baker, do you wanna discuss that? And so the difference, one of the changes in the processes was to give people the option or take it away from having to convey your rights away at a preliminary plot and put it down at final? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's under the, the section twenty, chapter twenty-eight, excuse me, section twenty-eight, three sixty-four.
Yes, ma'am.
Development approval procedure. That's just changing the timing from basically preliminary to final plot.
Thank you. I just wanted the public to know what the difference was. And so I'd like to make a motion to approve section twenty-eight dash three sixty-four.
I have a motion and a second by Ms. Bomke. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Tally the vote.
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Question. Now, we didn't vote on the other part. Do we need to vote it up or down now? Or we just can let it table it?
Not table.
Or just leave it on the table?
The board is not required to take action. If the board would like to speak through action and formally deny it, it can, but it's not required. This is a county-initiated amendment, so you're not required to take action on it.
So if we don't take action, what happens? Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay.
It won't be considered.
Good.
We'll, we'll change the ordinance to reflect the decision of the board.
Just, if, I'm sorry, good. If there's a, like a bomb goes off or something, and in six weeks we wanna bring it back, since we didn't act on it and vote it down, could it, could it be brought back on the agenda? Would it have to go through new business, old business, and then possibly be voted on, or is it completely dead if we don't deal with it now?
If the board wants to take it up in the future, it should defer. If the board wants this item to, to no longer be considered, then no actions required, or you can take an action to deny. Beyond that, if the board wants to take it up again in the future, and it's already been taken off the table, then it would have to go back through the process with the planning commission. So if the board would like to defer this part of it, the board can defer it to bring it back up at a future time.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Michelle?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to defer twenty-eight dash three fifty-nine.
Second.
What timeframe? Do we need a timeframe?
A timeframe doesn't have to be specifically given, we'll work with the chairman when setting the agenda to bring it back to the board when the board, or the chairman directs.
I have a motion by Ms. Shelton to defer. I have a second by Ms. Bomke. Any discussion? Mr. Cohen?
Nope, I'm just waiting to vote.
Oh, I heard something.
Yeah, it was my phone.
No discussion? Cast your votes.
Yes.
Tally the vote. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number twenty-one, Public Works Transportation, consider the condemnation and exercise of quick-take powers in connection with the Route One and Courthouse Road Intersection Improvement Project.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Alex Ozjak. I'm the Transportation Program Manager with Public Works, and tonight I'll be providing a brief presentation on the three properties that are up for possible condemnation action this evening on the Route One and Courthouse Road Intersection Improvement Project. First, I'm gonna give you some brief background on the project. The Route One Courthouse Road project will widen Route One between Bells Hill and Hope Road intersection and Courthouse Road intersection to provide dedicated left-turn lanes onto both Courthouse Road and the Bells Hill-Hope Road. These new turn lanes will reduce the congestion and delay experienced at these intersections, as well as improve roadway safety. The county has contracted with Bowman Consulting Group for the project design and right-of-way acquisition. The county will need to acquire the necessary property rights before utility relocation can begin and construction can begin. And right now, we're looking at starting road construction in spring of 2021. Again, we've got a total of twenty-nine parcels that are being impacted by this project. To date, all offer letters have been sent out and presented to property owners. To date, actually, I received an agreement this afternoon, so we have six agreements now signed with property owners, leaving twenty-three parcels remaining. The public hearing for this project was held back on June ninth, 2016, and staff and our consultant have been meeting with property owners ever since to try and discuss and alleviate their property concerns. And this slide is here, just a brief slide showing the sequence of contact with property owners since we sent out survey notification letters back in December 2014, all the way to the present. Now, for the actual properties being discussed tonight, this property here is Tax Map Parcel Thirty Dash Eighty-seven A. This graphic is showing the permanent storm drainage easement, as well as the temporary construction easement the county needs to acquire. Now, the bona fide offer was presented to the landowner on August third, 2018. There have been multiple attempts by our consultant and county staff to discuss the offer, solicit a counteroffer, and engage in negotiations. To date, the landowner will not return our voice messages and will not respond to mailings we've sent. This has effectively stalled negotiations on this parcel. Now, while our consultant and staff will continue to try and reach a settlement with the landowner, we recommend approval resolution R nineteen dash oh eight to acquire this property through condemnation. The second parcel being discussed tonight is Tax Map Thirty Dash Eighty-seven. This graphic here is showing the area where we need to acquire approximately sixty-eight square feet of permanent traffic signal easement for the Bells Hill and Hope Road intersection. Now, for this one, again, the bona fide offer was presented to the landowner on August third, 2018. Again, we've had multiple attempts through phone and mailings to try and contact the landowner to talk about the purchase offer or solicit a counteroffer. To date, we've had no response from the landowner. So again, while our consultant and staff will try to work with the landowner to reach a settlement, at this point, we are recommending condemnation action for resolution R eighteen dash oh nine. And this is the last property up this evening. This is a combination of Tax Map Parcels Thirty Dash Sixty-One, Thirty Dash Sixty-Two, and Thirty Dash Sixty-Three. Now, because these are all adjoining parcels owned by the same owner, VDOT allows us to treat these parcels as one parcel. And this graphic here is also showing the fee simple right-of-way, the permanent utility, permanent drainage, and permanent traffic control easement required, as well as a temporary We reached out and made a bona fide offer to the property owner on October twenty-seventh, 2018. The landowners expressed an interest in selling the entire parcel to the county. Unfortunately, VDOT regulations only allow us to acquire the property that's necessary for the construction of the roadway project, no more than that. Landowners indicated he would not accept our offer, nor submit a counteroffer, and would seek legal counsel to contest this acquisition. In fact, just this weekend, we did receive correspondence from an attorney indicating he was representing the landowner and would fight the condemnation.
Excuse me, just a second, Ms. Mauer?
Kind of be careful in how I ask this question. Were these properties on the market at any time, or did we have reason to believe these properties were on the market for sale at any point?
I don't recall if they, if these properties are on the market for sale at any point, no, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Going back, so negotiations, again, have effectively stalled on this property as well due to refusal to submit a counteroffer and indication to legally contest the acquisition. And again, we'll continue to work with the landowner to try and reach a settlement. But right now, county staff recommends approval of resolution R nineteen dash ten to acquire this property through condemnation. And now, we have to try and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Ms. Shelton, you have a question?
Actually, I have one. When, can you go back to the last parcel? My question is, if I own Thirty Sixty-Two, Thirty Sixty-Three, and I was going to redevelop that, how much of that property would I have to give up now to VDOT?
Okay, I have that information with me. All right, so prior to our acquisition, all three parcels combined are approximately zero point eight acres. Now, after the acquisition, you'll be left with zero point six three acres.
Oh, wow. So most of it would have to go to VDOT anyway.
Yeah. In fact, the one building that's kinda highlighted there underneath the green will actually be, being demolished as part of the construction.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will open the public hearing. This public hearing is for all three properties. Anyone in the chamber wish to address for or against the proposal, you're welcome to come forward. Here again, you have three minutes, and when the green light comes on, you go, and when the yellow light comes on, you have about a minute, and when the red light comes on, we appreciate if you wrap it up. Anyone on my right side would like to address the board on the subject? Anyone on my left would like to address the board? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board and close the public hearing. Ms. Shelton, this is in your district, and I believe you're gonna need three separate motions, one for each, is that correct?
That was my question to Ms. McClennan, they have to be separate?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll start it off. I'd like to propose that we accept resolution R nineteen dash zero eight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept resolution dash, R nineteen dash oh eight. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your votes. Tally the vote.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to nothing. Ms. Shelton?
I'd like to make a motion for R nineteen dash zero nine.
I have a motion and a second, and a second by Ms. Mauer for nineteen dash oh nine. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your votes.
Yes.
Tally the votes. Motion carries seven to zero. And nineteen dash ten, Ms. Shelton?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion for R nineteen dash ten.
I have a motion for nineteen dash ten. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mauer. Any discussion?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Seeing as how we just received a letter from council this weekend, I was wondering if we would be willing to entertain a referral to give staff just two weeks to be able to reach out to council for the property owners and see if we're able to come back with a counteroffer. Because of their silence, we haven't been able to go through the process, and I've talked with staff already, and two weeks won't delay them in the acquisition and moving forward with the project schedule.
Okay, if that's, I'll go back to Ms. Shelton. Would you amend your motion?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to, yes, sir, I'd like to amend my motion to defer R nineteen dash ten for two weeks.
I'll accept that amendment.
And we have a second, any discussion? Cast your vote.
Yes.
Tally the vote. Motion carries seven to nothing. Thank you. seven to nothing. Thank you very much. Item number 22, Public Works Transportation, amend and reordain Stafford County Code 15-56 designation of restricted parking areas within the Austin's Landing subdivision. Proposed ordinance 019-19.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
You've got a busy night here tonight.
Yes.
Two out of three.
Tonight's my night. Again, my name is Alex Ozjak with Public Works, and tonight I'll be writing a brief presentation on the consideration of restricted parking area in the Austin Landing subdivision. Back in November 2018, the county received a formal letter from the Austin's Landing Homeowners Association requesting the establishment of restricted parking area within their subdivision. The HOA has requested that Carnaby Street and Belcroft Drive be designated as restricted parking areas. And now, both of these streets do meet the definition of a public highway as defined in the code. The board authorized tonight's public hearing at the January 22 meeting, and advertisements for tonight's hearing ran in the Freelance Star on February 5 and again on February 12. And if approved by the board, County Code Section 15-56 would be amended and reordained, designated Carnaby Street and Belcroft Drive as restricted parking areas. This graphic here just kind of shows the two streets under consideration, highlighted here in red. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this item.
Any questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. Same rules apply. Anyone on my right would like to address this, for or against? Please come up, sir.
I'll make this brief. Mark Cramatolo, 105 Belcroft Drive. I'm the HOA president, and I'm speaking in favor of this. The Bel, Carnaby Street specifically is only 30 feet wide, and with vehicles and trailers on both sides, it's causing an issue where at one time, there was a medical emergency, and the emergency vehicles had a hard time getting through with vehicles and trailers parked on both sides. I'm currently working with the fire marshal to get a fire lane put in on one side, but for right now, we need to get those trailers and other commercial vehicles off the road to, for, just for safety reasons.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else on the right would like to address this? Anyone on my left would like to address it?
Paul Wodowski, Eight Picket Lane. You know, when you build a subdivision and you have an HOA, you should have got your fire lane put in, just like I had mine in 1990. Get your stormwater under control, and that's how you basically take care of it. What I'm concerned about is, yes, I do agree with safety and the width of the road, but if you saw some of the roads that are in this county, some of them don't have curbs. As a matter of fact, many people don't realize you cannot pass a Virginia driver's license if you don't know that you cannot park in a subdivision within the Commonwealth unless it has curbs. Now, as usual, you know, I'll pick on staff because, you know, I've got nothing better to do. I get this subjective aspect of a briefing with nothing in here except, oh, we get a letter that's there. Well, now I know what I'm going to do. I'm going to send you a letter about not getting a water and sewer bill for 30 years.
Thank you, Mr. Wodowski. Anyone else in the chamber would like to address the board on this? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
I think this is the first time I've seen all public hearings in one district. Your night.
Okay, well, this is actually my pleasure. All right, so I would be proud to make a motion to approve ordinance 019-19.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Mauer. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Yes.
Tally the votes. Motion carries seven to nothing. Ladies and gentlemen, we've got some bad weather coming. Stafford County schools are closed tomorrow. So if you get up in the morning, there's snow, stay home. Meeting is adjourned.